Yeah, she's back.
I think in January they were showing that whole movie. It was the beginning.
That might be the first presentation.
We're gonna start putting together the plan.
This is how it's gonna roll for my career.
I would like to call the school board business meeting for December 14th to order, please. Barb, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Board Chair Hepner.
Here.
Vice Chair Lachlan.
Here.
Presser Lehman.
Here.
Clerk Pelletier.
Here.
Director Pearson.
Here.
Director Patachak.
Here.
Director Stivland.
Here.
You have four.
Thank you. Would you please stand for pledge of allegiance?
You're fine.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you. Our district mission statement, Director Lehman?
Thank you. The mission of Stillwater Area Public Schools in partnership with students, family, and community is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you. And our school board goals, Director Pelletier?
As board members, we are morally and legally responsible for an equitable and quality education for each and every student in our district. As board members, we ensure decisions are made in the interest of all students E21 and for future generations impacted by our actions. Partner with administration to assure all students are provided equitable opportunities to reach their maximum potential. We will participate in efforts that support student and community engagement. We will direct district efforts to develop a balanced budget for 2017-18, and we will exercise effective self-governance.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda for the evening?
So moved.
And a second?
All second.
Thank you. All who's in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Pose. Thank you. This is where we would typically have the superintendent's report. Superintendent Pontrelli is out sick with the flu this evening. She would like three board members to talk about some things that have gone on in the district over the last couple of weeks, and I'll start by talking about our Portrait of a Graduate meetings. Last week at Oakland and this week at Stillwater Middle School, we held some community conversations about Portrait of a Graduate. This is a document that defines the skills, attributes, and opportunities our community believes its students need for success after high school. Knowing that our current students will be future employees, employers, business owners, elected officials, neighbors, and community members, we all have a vested interest in helping ensure their success. We have had a variety of think tanks. We've had some online thought exchanges, and these community conversations have certainly helped the board as they look at what the Portrait of the Graduate should be. We had a nice turnout at Oakland, and we had a large turnout at Stillwater Middle School, and I would also like to thank our avid students. They were the facilitators for the meeting, did a great job in keeping the community members on task, and then reporting back themes that they found from the community conversation. So thanks to those avid students, and thanks to community members who showed up to talk about the Portrait of a Graduate. Another thing that Superintendent Pontrelli asked about was the Reimagined Minnesota Poll. You were there, so if you could speak to that?
Yes. So, and board members, I believe Chair Hepner had requested a copy you should each find in your folder about the conference. So as George mentioned, AMSD hosted the conference on December 8th, and so you'll see, and we won't go over the entire agenda, but essentially what it was, and for those, just a refresh about what Reimagined Minnesota was, is that it really came about a collaboration of area superintendents from around the metro area and some from outside of the metro area to really think about how we want to disrupt and move forward to really look at some of the inequities, the pervasive inequities that exist in our current system in Minnesota. As we know, that we sit amongst the bottom in terms of our gaps in the state, and so as superintendents and as school boards and as leaders, really having a large conversation about, okay, how can we tackle this head-on as a collective and kind of power in the numbers, if you will. So, a number of superintendents from around the area spoke about the different strategies that are going to be outlined, everything from how are we going to make sure that we have more of a culturally responsive curriculum, to how are we going to increase the diversity in our teaching force, to what does it mean when we are going to really reexamine policies, procedures, and practices to best serve all of our students. So, and you'll see that packet there, and there is going to be follow-up meetings, and I think there might be an opportunity for board members and other AMSD members to participate, so please keep on watch for that. But all the information as far as kind of what was covered for that day is in there, so.
Thank you. The third thing she asked that we cover this evening, this morning, we did have a think tank, and I know Director Patachak, you were one of the participants, and if you could speak to that think tank?
Gladly. Thank you. I had a wonderful opportunity this morning to attend the think tank, and roughly it went like this. They had invited 17 individuals from the community to come in. I believe that most of those people coming in did not know each other. The particular slant this morning was the arts. Not quite. There was a potpourri of others there as well, but it was a wonderful blend. I want to commend Bob McDowell and John Perry and Carissa because they did a wonderful job. The real test, they did a wonderful job. It was slated to go two and a half hours, and so it started roughly at eight o'clock, was supposed to end about 10:30. I left at 11:00, and these people who didn't know each other were still conversing well after a half an hour later. And so, I mean, that's the kind of tone they set. But the exercise that I think we did, and John, Bob, and Carissa all did a little modeling as well, is basically, they had us in groups of four or five, and John had explained really some of his own personal education experiences, K-12. And so what they asked each of us to do at our tables is to take some time, write roughly about a half sheet of paper, things that stood out about our own education, and then share it with the other people at the table. But then what they did that I think was very handy to do is they gave us three markers, and we recorded this as a group, and we were asked to, first of all, if you use the red markers, these were things that were happening in schools that they wanted to stop. If there were things that were not occurring that ought to be, according to the people at that table, they were to put those with a green marker. And then if there were things that were happening but they needed to be built on or improved, they did the orange. And that format worked extremely well. There were a lot of very, very interesting ideas that were promoted. We posted those, and many of you are very well of the technique. Each of the 17 people that were there then got to put a series of dots between those in a way to prioritize what resonated the most with them. So it was time that was extremely well done, and our facilitators were outstanding, and I was glad to be part of that. Thank you.
Good. Thanks. Good luck to Superintendent Pontrelli. Hope we did what she wanted us to do this evening, and hope she gets better. Our next introductory item is the student report, so we'll turn it over. Which direction are you going?
I'll start.
Annabelle?
Good evening. My name is Annabelle Gregg, and I am one of the presidents of Student Council at Stillwater Area High School. As first semester begins to come to an end, the school has been buzzing with activity and excitement. Students face lots of testing before winter break. This definitely helps to heighten their excitement for their time off of school. Our music programs have been practicing for concerts. Sports teams are entering the full swing of winter season, and other clubs are busy working with planning and executing of events. Student Council has been working hard for the last few weeks. The shutdown of Withrow Ballroom where our winter dance has been held historically left us in a predicament. After much exploration, deliberation, and deliberation, we found JX Event Center, which is located about two blocks from here. We are lucky enough to lock it down for January 20th of 2017. It would be fun to have some school board members drop by or even chaperone. We are always in need of chaperones. It's a super fun event that highlights our students in a very different light. Other Student Council members have been reaching out to significant figures in our community to align speakers for BLAST Week, which stands for Be Loving and Sharing Together. This week will occur from February 12th to 16th. There are hopes to have Ilhan Omar speak, a cultural fashion show, political figures like Karen Housley and Rebecca Otto as well. In general, this week is meant to highlight the diversity in cultures, views, and knowledge bases that do not always get a chance to be talked about at Stillwater Area High School. We look forward to sharing more with you as BLAST Week gets even closer. National Honor Society wrapped up a very busy week as well. They hosted a community blood drive where 39 units were collected. This equates to 117 lives being saved. Student, staff, and community members rolled up sleeves to save lives. In addition, NHS held coffeehouse auditions. Coffeehouse has a musical performance put on twice a year in the winter and spring. At the show, students put on a whole lineup of music. Many students claim this is one of the highlights of their year. All proceeds go to a charity of NHS's choice. If you would like to come and join us for the winter show on December 22nd in the high school auditorium, there are tickets and sales informations on GoPony's website as well. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Isabella, you want to introduce yourself?
Hello. My name is Isabella Portelli. I'm junior officer of Student Council, and I'll be filling in for Ava tonight. Last week, Amnesty International hosted a celebration of World Human Rights Day. For each hour of the school day on Friday, December 8th, a guest speaker presented to students in the main forum room of the high school. During Hour One, Joan Countryman from the Bridge of Youth spoke of youth homelessness. During Second Hour, a Washington County prosecutor spoke about sex trafficking in Washington County. For Third and Fourth Hour, there was a presentation addressing sex trafficking, child trafficking, and sex trafficking in Nigeria and the organization BISA. During Fifth Hour, Spanish teacher Christian Carter and students spoke about their club Dollars for Dreams and economic development through microfinance. To wrap up the day, Patty Hall, founder of H2O for Life, spoke about water as a human right. Students also had the opportunity to sign Amnesty International petitions. Stillwater's Amnesty International presidents were pleased about how smoothly the event went. It was a major success. Winter sports are well underway, and our athletes are looking strong. Tonight is a big day for sports. The girls and boys hockey teams both have games going on right now, and there are meets for the boys swim and dive team. In addition, the gymnastics team and the wrestling team have meets tonight. Games and meets will continue throughout the week and into the weekend. You can check GoPony's.org for full details on the activities. This weekend, the music department at the high school has three performances of their winter concert. There are two performances on Sunday. The first one begins at 3:00 p.m. and the evening performance at 7:00 p.m. The final performance is on Monday evening at 7:00 p.m. Tickets are sold out for Sunday, but there's still availability for the Monday show. You can find more information at GoPony's.org and on the SASH Student Council Twitter page at SASH Studco. Thank you.
Thank you. And it reminded me that I should announce that if you turn on the channel that we're on, on cable access, and you expect to watch hockey, you need to go to Channel 18 in order to get to the hockey game. And just congratulations to you guys at the high school. Amnesty International's been doing work there for a lot of good years, and Be Loving and Sharing Together, I remember when I was teaching, that that had been started by the Student Council, so congratulations on keeping that going. That's a fantastic thing. District recognition, we have two items this evening, and I'll introduce Dr. McDowell to talk about the partnership.
Thank you, Chair Hepner. At this time, I'd like to bring up Bev Petry and Connie Payment to the podium. Each year, the partnership plan makes grants to teachers for the great ideas to inspire students and enhance instruction in their classrooms. These innovation grants are funded by individual donors, foundations, and businesses. I'm delighted to thank them for the fall classroom grants to teachers in Stillwater Area Public Schools. The breadth of the grants ranged from trout hatching and releasing for high school students to a theater residency for preschoolers. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Bev Petry and just the acknowledgement and appreciation for the partnership plan.
Thank you, Board Chair and board members, and thank you for those kind words. I'm here with Connie Payment and Melinda Lancefeld, both members of our board, representing the rest of our board who could not be here tonight. But we appreciate the, you know, the partnership plan has been going since 1989, and in all that time, our primary purpose is to provide the sort of enrichment activities that are beyond the means of the district to provide. And our fall grant process, which is the one that you've just been talking about, is always an opportunity for us to see the amazing creativity by the teachers in Stillwater Area Public Schools. And we love to support that sort of thing. In fact, we have one of those teachers in the back of the room right now, Andy Weaver.
Who, uh...
I know, he's back. And we have been supporting his efforts to hatch falcon chicks for quite some time now, and we're very proud of that and the work that he does with students. And I just want to mention that we, in addition to those classroom grants, another big thing that we do is DaVinci Fest. DaVinci Fest is going to be on January 6th this year at Stillwater Area High School, and this is the 10th anniversary of DaVinci Fest. And it is really an event that is unlike any other. We're not aware that anyone has anything quite like this in the state of Minnesota. It is an art fair for students. It's a science fair for students. It's a film fest. The students can come and recite their poetry. We have theater students who come and do improv. It is an event that is open to all students who live within district boundaries, no matter where they go to school. And if that were all it was, it would be pretty amazing. But we have, over those 10 years, concentrated on making this a community event to celebrate art and science, and so we bring in all kinds of exhibitors. This year, we're going to have, well, in addition to some of the other ones that we usually have, we have a club that's coming in from Minneapolis, and these 20 and 30-somethings have devoted their free time to building working Star Wars droids.
Wow.
And so if you come to DaVinci Fest, you might see that. We have someone who has figured out how to use earthworms to recycle styrofoam. Okay, so I know. Can't wait to see that either. At any rate, it is a free community event, January 6th, like I said, and I hope everyone comes. We love to share this gift with our community. So thank you very much.
Do you want to share the date of the fundraising gala?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes. Obviously, we need some funding to be able to do what we do, and so every year, we have a gala, and that is going to be on April 20th, Friday, April 20th. It's a new date, a new month, and a new location. We're going to be having it at JX Event Center in downtown Stillwater. So we're changing things up because we're moving to a new facility, and so stay tuned for that as well.
Thank you. And thank you for your work with the partnership, like you say, since 1989. I can't imagine the number of teachers that have taken advantage of those grants especially, so thanks for that. And our next recognition, I'll turn to Board Member O'Lachlan.
Thank you, Chair Hepner. So I have the honor and privilege to recognize our very own, Mr. George Hepner, who was recently named to the All-State Board with the Minnesota School Boards Association. So I'd just start, I'd like to start by reading the press release that MSBA had sent out. Stillwater Area Board Member George Hepner has been named to the 2018 All-State School Board, which is the Minnesota School Boards Association's most prestigious award. The award will be given during a luncheon Thursday, January 11, 2018, at MSBA's annual leadership conference. The conference will be held at the Minneapolis Convention Center, and the luncheon runs from 11:30 a.m. to 12:45 p.m. Since 1971, MSBA Awards Committee selects up to seven individual board members to the All-State School Board. There are nearly 2,300 school board members in the state of Minnesota. Board members are nominated by superintendents, fellow board members, parents, or community members for their outstanding contributions to public education. Mr. Hepner was one of the seven board members chosen for the award this year. "The All-State School Board represents the highest example of board service. These are school board members who are committed to student achievement, determined to build support for their local schools, and unwavering in their pursuit of what is best for students," said MSBA Executive Director Kirk Schneiderwind. "Criteria for the award includes MSB training, which you have done much of, strong leadership, excellent in boardsmanship, communication skills, visionary thinking, demonstration of concern for students, staff, and other stakeholders, and support for the nomination from the stakeholders." Mr. Hepner was cited for helping guide the Stillwater School Board team through some very trying times while always keeping his focus on student achievement. So, Jordan, I'm going to invite fellow colleagues to join in here, but I just want to personally let you know what a role model would a mentor, how much our district has benefited from your counsel, your wisdom, and your guidance. And there are very, you know, it's a very short list of people who have really dedicated their life to our school district, and you are amongst the top of that list in your years of teaching, and then your almost decade now of serving on the school board. And your leadership is recognized by not only MSBA but by fellow colleagues, former teachers, students. I've been to so many events with you where students will come up and talk about the profound impact and the indelible impact that you have left in their life. And as our district is moving forward and aspiring toward increasing our achievement and success for each and every student, as you know, having a real solid understanding of where we've been and that history is so critical to that growth, and you've provided just that institutional knowledge of helping us be that bridge of knowing our history while we have that orientation to the future. So I just want to congratulate you and thank you for all that you have done, for the public service that you've given to our community, and most of all, for always, as you say, keeping the main thing the main thing and keeping our students at the center of every decision that we make.
Thank you. I want to thank all the board members that I've worked with over the last 10 years and the superintendents, and we've got a full agenda this evening. We've got a, we've really got to move on if we can get the open forum list.
I would like a round of applause.
I'll read the open forum prologue that we usually read at this time. "Stillwater Area School District welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improve learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during the open forum. However, the board may ask administration to review the concerns presented." And with that, I would call on Rachel Bugby. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Bugby, and I live on Lydia Circle in Stillwater. I'm here again this month to clarify the previous statements I made at the last board meeting. Apparently, the board is being told that the physical abuse of staff is old news that happened only at Afton Lakeland, the school that I used to work at. It is not old news. Physical abuse of staff since September of 2017 is happening in at least four of the seven elementary schools and one of the middle schools with both regular and special education students. I am certain with more digging, it would be discovered at the other five schools as well, but that requires transparency and trust for the staff to report. Have you ever been attacked? Who are these incidents being reported to? The school principal? The human resources department? The superintendent? The board? Who is following through on these incidences? What is the policy for staff safety? I am speaking on behalf of teachers in paras who are afraid to speak out for fear of retaliation, letters of discipline, and intimidation. We should be encouraging our staff members to report abuse and attacks. Knowing when or knowing and responding is critical to promoting a healthy workplace environment. When teachers aren't fearful, they can do amazing work for our children. I'm begging you to listen and protect your staff. They are suffering and are afraid to speak out. There is a culture of fear in our buildings, and it needs to stop. Thank you.
We have a consent agenda with a number of items. Minutes of the November 16th, 2017 Special School Board Meeting. Minutes of November 16th, 2017 School Board Meeting. Minutes of the November 17th, 2017 Special School Board Meeting. Minutes of November 28th, 2017 Special School Minutes of November 28th, 2017 special school board meeting. Minutes of the December 7th, 2017 special school board meeting. An acceptance of gifts and donations for November of 2017. The dispersment register, November 9th through December 6th of 2017. The treasurer's report for November of 2017. The Human Resources Personnel Report. The Ties-Watts Wide Area Transportation Agreement. The extension of Stefan Stagecoach LLC property lease. And the mediated settlement agreement. Could I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So would.
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Thank you. And we have reports this evening. Our first report is "Truth in Taxation." Ms. Hoheisel.
Good evening. Thank you, Board Chair Hepner, school board members, and students and grownups that are in attendance for this presentation. This is the last step in setting or certifying our levy for payable 2018. And what that means, it's the impact for taxpayers during the calendar year of 2018, but for the school district, it's the collection of revenue for the 2018-2019 school year. One of the "Truth in Taxation" requirements is to discuss the budget. Unfortunately, with the timing of when "Truth in Taxation" usually falls, we're talking about a budget, and as you will see as we get further down on the agenda tonight, that is slightly out of date. It is our last adopted budget, which is the preliminary budget, and so just realize that those numbers are not necessarily going to be reflective of the information that you receive later because we're talking a preliminary budget, which the board adopted in June, compared to a revised budget, which is work that we've been doing since October. Just to identify the revenue with the preliminary budget, you can see the different categories that we have. We talk about levy, and I'd like to call out, so this is the one piece that the board sets, the action that you're doing tonight to move forward. So when we look and say 25.5% of our general fund budget is levy, we're setting that dollar amount tonight for next year. And then there's state aid, federal aid, grants, and other revenue. And you can see the list of the different funds that we service. I will say, I did have handouts available because I know the numbers on the screen are very challenging to read. Unfortunately, with the technology difficulties that we're having, there wasn't enough handouts for everyone tonight. It will be available online. The expenditure side of the preliminary budget, we break down the general fund based on program so you can see what percentage is school administration, district support services, instruction, special education, and so on. And then again, it gets broken down into the various funds of food service, community service, building, debt, trust, and agency. This is reflective of the general fund budget, and this chart shows kind of what percentage. It's a visual. It's more of a visual adaptation of the first few slides with the numbers of exactly, if you were to have a pie, what pieces of that pie go to what various accounts or where they come in from. So it's the revenue, and you can see the vast majority of our general fund revenue comes from state aid, and the next biggest piece is levy. And then on the expenditure side, you can see that regular vocational instruction and special education are the vast majority of that pie. As we move into the levy itself, a school district levy may either be set by state formula or voter-approved. So we talk often about, here's a non-voter-approved category or the voter-approved category. That is how it works. And there are different components on how the levy gets divided amongst our taxpayers. There are formulas. One that applies to referendum market value. What this means is there are properties included with this, but it excludes specifically seasonal property cabins, seasonal recreational property, and it also excludes agricultural property. And so there's a different formula that's placed on homes if the levy falls into this category than if it falls into the net tax capacity formula, which includes all properties, and it's the assessed value or the market value times a property's class rate. And when I say "class rate," that means a residential home is class rated at a 1.0. A commercial property might pay more, and I don't recall the exact class rate, but let's say a 1.15, or they have a different rate of taxes that they absorb. The one thing I'd like to point out, and it's a key component for, quite honestly, all levies, is the growth in both of these categories. Please notice that staggered through the years. We continue to climb. This helps spread our levy, and so the impact to an individual taxpayer is mitigated because, again, we set a dollar amount. That dollar amount just gets spread over a bigger base. If your value, your assessed value increased, you're part of that bigger base, you might absorb more of the cost than what you were paying. The general fund levy, this slide is the same slide that you had seen in September when you certified the maximum, with the exception of, if you notice, about halfway down, alternative teacher compensation has been zeroed out. I believe, it was my assumption, that the board had no intention of moving forward with a Q Comp levy for next year, and so the amount, and we had a lot of discussion in September about why does it need to be there to begin with. At this point, we can remove it because we are certifying a dollar amount, and so that is reflective. I want to say, what that does is adjust our bottom line levy by $744,680-some dollars. That's the round number for that. So, other than what you saw in September, no other levies changed, with the exception of the removal of that.
So can I ask one more question? So, preliminary hearing, as we indicated to the public, we were setting it at the maximum. Tonight, based upon what you're showing us, we're going below the maximum, which we're allowed to do. We can't go higher, but we can always go lower.
That's correct. That's correct. And you could still choose tonight, again, because I have received no other input, you could choose to continue to drop that tonight. The presentation isn't established that way, but tonight would be the night that you would say we're choosing to under-levy in another category, if you so choose. The community service levy, all of this levy falls under net tax capacity. Again, it matters depending on the type of home you have. Again, no change from where we were preliminarily. Our debt service levies, this is to cover, like I say, our mortgages that we have out there, the debt that we've created. We have payments every year that include principal and interest. This levy is to support those payments. And then our totals. And then I would like to point out that your bottom line total is $38,153,001.45. That is the levy that I would be asking the board to certify tonight. And this is where you can see total preliminary pay. Again, it provides a visual of where have our levies increased over the course of five years? What does that look like as far as the dollar amount in each particular fund? We've had conversation about this slide in the past, and I would like to touch on it again because I believe that, I honestly believe it's an impactful slide. When we talk about, and we had this discussion in September, we also talked about it at Finance, the Budget 101 meeting. When we have, when you set a dollar amount for a levy, it would be a change maybe in board philosophy as far as saying, the dollar amount increased from the prior year, therefore, therefore, we didn't approve to, the board has approached the levy as far as it being tax-neutral, and therefore, there's a dollar amount increase, so we can't be tax-neutral. And actually, in the next three slides, we'll adjust that. Again, when your tax base changes, your referendum market value, your net tax capacity changes and grows, you can allow for that growth in your levy and still absorb it and have a neutral result to your taxpayers. One thing I'd like to point on in this slide, and what can cause the two variables, is you can see that Stillwater Area Public Schools, and this was last year's levy that was all set. We know that there were many districts that were out for referendum this fall. It is not reflective of those numbers, so this data is almost a year old because those districts haven't certified their levies yet. But it shows that Stillwater is, at least in these comparison districts, is second to last as far as what our taxpayer, who owns a $250,000 home, pays in school taxes. And what was, the way to look at that is if we were to take a $250,000 house, if that was your home, and you were to lift it up, and you were to move it to South Washington County and set it back down, the school taxes that you pay are going to go from $967.40 to $1,589.30. Couple of things that can cause that change. One, quite honestly, they have more levy. Maybe they have more voter approval or more non-voter approval levy that they're taxing their taxpayers. Two, what does their tax base look like? How is that being spread throughout? What do they have for commercial industrial property? Those are typically your two big things that can adjust. Why that would look that way, but again, when looking at just what our $250,000 home taxpayers pay compared to our neighboring districts, you can see that we are near the bottom and above state average. Same holds true for agricultural property, that we are second from the bottom and just below state average on a one-acre, non-homestead agricultural property valued at $10,000. I believe there's one slide left. And I'm, is there two?
Yeah.
Oh, I have it. I will move on to the slide that's titled "Estimated Impact on Property Values." What is in the upper right corner in yellow or mustard, you can see that property valuation appreciation is set at 4.88%. That's essentially saying that with new construction and growth, that could be the estimate of what the value of your property would increase. And that number, if you carry it forward to the left and you move farther down, you see the title "Residential Homestead." And back in pay 2017, if you had a $100,000 home, now with that assumption with the growth, new construction, what have you, your home now just got assessed for $104,000. Everybody see where I am? So what your school tax difference would be on your property tax statement is $6.30. Now again, not everybody goes up according to this, you know, or down. What I will say is this, if your home value stayed the same, if you had a $100,000 property a year ago and it's still assessed at $100,000, your school tax, what you pay in school tax is either neutral, or you've actually seen some less school taxes that you have to pay. So where the difference comes in is if your assessment changed, which is something that the school district doesn't control, you might be paying a larger portion than your neighbor whose valuation didn't change. Because again, we set the dollar amount, and that gets distributed based to everybody. Understand how that works? And so then, what else causes variables in tax increases and decreases? Change in market value, your assessed value. If your class rate or history has changed, that too can impact what you are paying, market value credit, voter-approved referendums, which we had, not in state adjustments. I would like to answer any questions, should you have them. Otherwise, I will look for Board Chair Hepner to turn it over to the public for comments, if you would, please.
Board members, you have any questions before we do that?
Our question I have.
Director Potatche.
Thank you. When you look at changes in class rates, history, history might be if you just bought or sold your house. This would raise it. Do you know offhand, how often are assessments updated?
I do not know that answer.
Continual or every other year? Because what I'm saying, with some people, and like you said, and very well, we don't have control over assessments. That's something that's done independently, but that can cause people's taxes to rise as well.
Director Pearson.
So I think the answer is that every year, it's assessed, but then I think it's appraised like every seven years, maybe. So, but I have a question. I wish I would have brought mine because mine went up a lot more than what's listed here. And my assessment went up a little bit, but not, I mean, significantly more than what would come across here. Where would that fit in some of these other things? Do you have any idea?
If you don't mind, I'm going to restate what I think I heard you ask. Your assessed value increased more than the 4.88% that's identified in the slide.
Oh, so if I follow, if I follow what my last year, what it was worth, it is assessing about what's in the list, which would give me about a $10 increase, but it's, my increase is significantly more than $10. So that's where I'm...
I would have to be able to look at your property tax statement to identify that change.
So this is what most people will see, but there could be variations.
Right, absolutely. And I will say this, my property, my assessed value actually went down. I'm seeing a significant decrease in my school taxes. Again, it comes back down to the distribution. If yours went up and mine went down, you're now picking up more of the share than I am than we were a year ago. Let's go that way. But Director Pearson, I would need to be able to see that statement to identify.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Director Stivland?
I don't know if you covered this. I might have missed it. So you zeroed out the Q Comp because we talked about it, and it seemed like that's what we were going to do. But where would that, on the one graph that you had with the district comparison, that showed we were near the lowest? What kind of an impact on that would that be if we did fully fund Q Comp instead of zeroing that out?
Again, that wouldn't, I would have to add that number back in and run the comparisons to see where we would fall as far as the impact. Again, we're talking year-old, board-approved data. And so I would like to make, I would like to, I think it would be a value add to be able to look at that once all districts certify their levies in December, and we have recent information with all referendum, and then add the three-quarters of a million dollars back in to see the impact.
As just a general idea, I'm thinking it's pretty small. It would have a pretty small impact.
As it, and I'm trying to recall when we were discussing OPEB and the various alternatives that we were looking at for OPEB and what the tax impact would be. Again, I'm not, significance is such a, it's such a term that's so independent, you know, what is significant to you is maybe or maybe not to someone else. But I think if we went back and looked and said, you know, a million-dollar impact of OPEB was $20 to $15, whatever it was, I mean, then you can kind of back your way and say that's what it would be looking like.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Director Pilateer.
So I really appreciate you putting that, the district comparison slide in your presentation. I think this is a significant slide for the public, as well as us, to understand how we compare to other districts. And I think, I think there are many misnomers out there about the levy and how much taxpayers are assessed. And I guess my question is, historically, can you speak to, and I know a little bit of the answer, but maybe just for the sake of the public, recently, and as far as you can recall, if you know, you know, have we levied all the way to the cap? Have we not, you know, have we been conservative over the years? And I guess I'm just looking at the past few cycles, if you know offhand.
So I have been, I believe this is my fifth presentation for Stillwater, so I can certainly speak up to that point. And given two referendums in there, the 2013 operating referendum, and then ultimately the building bond that passed in '15. And at that time, it was... And at that time, it was in 13 when the operating referendum passed, at least as far as what we could ask for an operating referendum. Not all the multiple categories, just the operating referendum. We were about $9 away from the state imposed cap. And then legislation changed and implemented a local optional formula that essentially then moved us from being $9 away from the cap to being $430 away from the cap, about. And so when you say, are we, are we optimizing or going to the max? We are as far as what our voters approved. Is there an opportunity to have, to go back out and ask for more? Yes. We're at the max of what we can do for what our voters approve. Now that is the voter-approved category. When you move to the non-voter-approved category, I believe this is year three for Q Comp as far as at least discussing the levy. We have yet to use that, so we have under-levied now for three years for Q Comp, where it was available to us and we chose not to do it. Another consideration that has come before the board and typically starts in the spring is, is what once was our alternative facility money and is now long-term facility maintenance money, where we set a dollar amount. Now, is that dollar, that dollar amount is based on ultimately getting us to a tax-neutral point? Do we possibly have projects that are greater than that, you know, we could say we need another million dollars for parking lot and roofs? I mean, those are the considerations where you, where it's non-voter-approved, but then the consideration of the taxpayers comes into play. And Q, excuse me, OPEB too. It's out there, we don't do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Director Potatchek.
Thank you. Two things. One's a comment and then one's a question. The first is a comment, I think you, as you pointed out, you have to be very, very careful with this. And the reason is because those who successfully passed levies, that's going to change.
Correct.
And so when you're talking to someone in those districts, you have to be real careful you're saying, okay, according to what data? And so it always becomes kind of a moving target. This, in the information provided, is accurate.
Correct.
But it's, it's hard to keep up comparables. The second one, and you stated it well, but I'm just asking a question just to emphasize, this board collectively made two decisions that could have raised levies that did not require voter approval. And one of those was Q Comp, and the other one was OPEB. And if we had gone those two routes, the amount of taxes that constituents would have had to pay would have been higher. And, and, and it's sort of like, Sarah made a very good point, but those questions, those comments are always loaded when you say significant or how much. And, and, but realize, and I'm saying, and this is a very appropriate evening to say that, our taxes are a little lower than they could have been because of those two policy decisions.
That is correct.
Director Lehman.
First of all, thank you for this information. Second of all, I agree with what Director Potatchek has said. For me personally, I have always been reluctant to increase the taxes to our constituents with non-voter-approved levies, especially, we've been very conservative on the long-term facility, looking at things that are necessary. It's a, it's a double-edged sword because it's obviously based upon using those funds where we're able to keep our facilities in such good shape that we're able to maximize the return on them in the event we have to sell them. But it's also, we want to make sure we're spending that money appropriately because it could be an open checkbook relative to spending taxpayer monies. With regards to the OPEB and also the Q Comp, my philosophy behind why I didn't want to support putting that again to the taxpayers is, I think it's a good example where we're allowed to take the money that we have and use, you know, use the best efforts of the people who are looking at that program to work within the budget, just like we as taxpayers have to do with our own budgets. We have a certain sum of money and we use it and come up with creative ways to do that. And so I'm very comfortable with this budget. I knew at the time that we had the initial, that we were max, we were certifying it to the maximum with the understanding, and I think we made it clear that our hope would be to come back to reduce that amount, which we're doing. And again, I think it's, it's a balanced approach to making sure we're doing what's best for kids, but also looking at the ramifications. And I think it is important when we hear, you know, well, you can raise it a little, you know, a little to some people is a lot. And if you're on a fixed income, you're watching your pennies pretty closely. So I think that for me, this, this is a good approach for next year, and thank you for providing this information.
You're welcome.
I just have one comment. I hope we can look at OPEB again next year. I'm going to disagree a little bit with Director Lehman. I think what we did with our vote as a board on that one was push that can down the road a little bit. I do think that's going to come back to haunt future boards, and I think some even tougher decisions will have to be made at that time. Any other board comments? Director Pilateer?
So, so my retort to that question might be, you know, how long have we been operating in that, in that regard with regards to our OPEB decision? I mean, is that, we're kicking the can down, but haven't we been kicking the can for many years?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we agree. Director Lott.
It's a well-worn can.
Yeah. So I wanted to... Because we, we had several conversations about that, and I think, as I recall where I stood on that, because I was one that was not in favor of, of that non-voter-approved levy, because I think it warrants much more robust discussion and conversation that involves the, the community and other stakeholders. Because I think that when you present OPEB and on its face, it can be a real nebulous concept, and I think we just have to be able to, to have that conversation and bring people along. So I just wanted to add that to your comment, because I think that was, that was my rationale anyway, and why I voted the way I did.
Okay. Do we turn it over at this time? If there are any community members that would like to speak to this levy, now is the time to come to the podium and speak to the board about the levy?
I know.
I don't have to ask that three times or anything.
No.
All right, I guess we have none. Thank you, Ms. Oheisel. Our next report...
Chair Hepner, I need a vote. Oh, no, that's action, that's later.
It's coming up.
Thank you.
Yep. Next report is Building Assets: Reducing Risks Initiative Update, and we'll start with Principal Raabak.
Thank you, Board Chair Hepner, members of the board, Annabelle, Isabella. One of the great aspects of my job as a principal is when you are in a position to accept some recognition on behalf of the good work that other people are doing. And it's a pleasure for me to briefly introduce you to the Building Assets and Reducing Risks Program, which we refer to as the BAR Program, and two amazing individuals at our school who are really going to do most of the talking with you that are here this evening. As many of you are aware, we had a transition committee that was formed going into the 2017-2018 school year to help us redesign some of the aspects of what we needed to do to welcome in two incoming classes of students. Some of those initiatives have been pretty prominent and have been discussed at length and have been pretty visible in terms of the start of our school year. We had link reorientation, and that was done right away at the beginning of the school year. And so at the, at the start of a new school year, that's one of the most prominent pieces that we have. We have flex time that's been introduced this year, and we recently had a very nice write-up in the Pioneer Press. So again, we've been able to garner some, some nice recognition for that. But the initiative that I am most confident will have the greatest impact on student achievement at Stillwater Area High School without question is the BAR Program. The BAR Program represents a comprehensive and systematic way of doing business for our ninth-grade student population of approximately 700 students. We would not have the BAR Program at Stillwater Area High School if it were not for the efforts of our Assistant Principal, Mr. Matt Kraft. Mr. Kraft is the person who first brought me some information on the BAR Program and sat down with me and said, we need to take a look at this. I was familiar with the BAR Program. I'd read about it. I'd actually attended a conference on it. But the more we looked at this program and the deeper we looked at it, the more we recognized that this program aligned almost perfectly with the goals that our transition team had been talking about and identifying as things that we needed. The other piece that I would tell you is that the BAR Program requires a significant investment to be able to pull off. And once again, thanks to Mr. Kraft's efforts, we were able to secure a partner that has made this a reality and allowed us to be able to bring this to our school without compromising the, the means of the school board and the school district. We would not be able to run the BAR Program without the efforts of our Coordinator, Ms. Katie Papagatoa. Katie has been science teacher extraordinaire in our district for 20 years, and this past year was interested or decided that she was interested in expanding her influence a little bit beyond the 150 or so students that she touched directly in her classroom and have a slightly wider influence. And to say that it's slightly wider would be an understatement. Katie currently coordinates meetings and sets agendas for those meetings for a minimum of five separate teams at ninth grade alone, where they get together to discuss students on a weekly basis, which she's going to tell you about a little bit. And Katie also oversees the interventions that are associated with almost every one of the 2,900 students that are here in our building that are currently receiving intervention. So without further ado, I want to introduce two fantastic employees in our school district, our Assistant Principal, Mr. Matt Kraft, and our coordinator, our BAR Coordinator, Ms. Katie Papagatoa.
All right, so here we are talking about BAR, and BAR has just taken on a life of its own, and it's just an incredible program. And the teachers that we have that's supported and are willing to go above and beyond is, it's just been amazing. So I have to say, there's an amazing group of ninth-grade teachers that I work with, and it wouldn't be possible to do BAR without their support. So I just want to give them credit as well. So BAR, what that stands for is Building Assets: Reducing Risk. And an asset is like a strength. And one of the things we want to do is help kids figure out what their strengths are. And we want to build upon those strengths that they have. So that's part of the programming is helping the kids figure that out. Another big piece of this program is relationship building, and so there's different parts of that I'm going to talk about. And then in building the assets, what we do is we reduce the risk, those behaviors that kids might take that may lead them down a path they don't want to go on. Or maybe we see something that we're very concerned about as a teaching staff, and so we say, what can we do? What kind of interventions can we do to help these kids? And so we don't want anyone to fall through the cracks. And so we started the whole program last, whoops, last spring. We had a training for the ninth-grade teachers and the school counselors as well, so that we could get to know each other and have kind of like a mini experience about what BAR would be like for our kids. And so I'm going to talk about, about some of those. And through the process, we've been involving parents as well and trying to figure out, how do we include parents in this so that we can get their feedback? And then, of course, the students, how do we get their feedback? And then the teachers as well, what's working, what's not working with our first year of implementation? And so that kind of builds into that eight interconnected strategies have to do with our training, our support systems, our teachers, our kids, our parents. So like I said, we're trying to figure out what the strengths are of our students, and they just recently actually completed an asset category questionnaire so they could figure out out of 40 assets, what assets did they have? And so that when we are talking about some of the activities that we do, those are called I-Times, and I'll refer a little bit more to those a little bit later, those help build upon the assets or the strengths they have, as well as help them maybe gain more strengths or more assets. What we hope to have happen is that we have more kids earning their core credits, and Mr. Kraft will talk about where we have, where our kids are at in terms of achieving success in their core classes. And we've created some interventions to help kids that aren't. And we've been able to identify those kids early on because of the team meetings and work that we're doing as a teaching staff every week to talk about the kids that we're teaching and what we can do to help them. We also are hoping that we're going to see a higher achievement on test scores. We've done a lot of talk about reading interventions, what kind of things can we do to support our kids? Because of the relationship building that's going on with the activities that the teachers do with the ninth graders, that's also increasing that engagement that goes on, because when you have a relationship with a teacher, you're more engaged, you're more apt to want to learn from that teacher. And we also are very connected with family means, and we did a survey with our kids to find out what concerns they had in regards to alcohol and drugs. And so we have a very strong support system at the school to help the kids with many, many different difficulties they might have as they move forward. So basically what we did is we took our 700 students and divided them into five teams. Each team has a science teacher, a social studies teacher, an English teacher, and a special ed teacher. Each team has a common prep. We get together on Tuesdays during their prep period, so each team gets together separately during their prep period, and that's where we talk about what concerns we have or what kids are doing very, very well, what's been working, what hasn't been working. And we document all of this on a spreadsheet. And what we're doing is we're creating like the whole story of that child. What, what bits of information have you heard? What do you know? And we poll in whether we need to poll in the EL teacher, whether we need to poll in a counselor. We try to reach out to whatever resources we can so we can create that whole story of who that child is. That way, when we design an intervention, it can best support them in where they are This is what the Teachers Week basically kind of looks like. On Tuesdays, we have our Teacher Block meetings, which are the four teachers along with myself. And at that time, we're documenting our interventions that we have tried into the spreadsheet along with where the kids are currently with their grades. And then we take some of those kids that we really feel like, you know, I think we need more of the story. We really need to try to understand what's going on. So then we have what's called a Big Block meeting Wednesdays after school, and that's where we poll in our eight counselors. We poll in additional case managers. We've had EL teachers come in. We've had our family means people, we've just, anybody we can get to help us, they'll come into the Big Block meetings. In addition, I forgot to say this, with Teacher Block meetings, we've invited parents to come in as well. That way, the parent can meet all the teach, you know, at least those core teachers at the same time, so sometimes that works better for some of our parents. So we've used that time to do that as well. We follow that up. If at Big Block, we decide we have tried so many different interventions and we're just not seeing a lot of success, or we're very concerned about a student, then we suggest that we then put their name into what's called Risk Review. And on Fridays, every Friday, we meet, and that would involve the eight counselors, myself, admin, our chemical health, mental health, our school nurse. We all get together and we try and figure out what would be a good action plan to move forward to help the student that we're struggling with. And then that, we just keep coming back, and we just never let that kid go till we figure out what it is we need to put in place to help them be successful. So the teachers have committed to quite a lot with this being the new year for, our new school for them. It's, it's just a lot of people taking on new preps, and they just have been amazing. Because in addition, they have now given up one of their prep periods a week, and then their time on Wednesdays after school, instead of meeting with their department, they're meeting as a bar team. And during, another thing that they do is they lead these things called I-Times. So once a week, we have an activity to help build that relationship piece between students and between teachers and students, and those I-Times address different topics. And the teachers have been committed to presenting those and doing those with the kids in their class, and it rotates between, one week it's a science teacher, the next week it's the English teacher, and the week after that, it's a social studies teacher. We even had the chemical health specialist come in and present to all the, all the classes. So just getting different people in front of the kids and just knowing that we're here for them. So the teachers have really committed to making this work. The I-Times, the activities that we do, a lot of them are just very engaging activities, and the whole thing, the whole purpose is for us as teachers to get to know the kids, but it's also for the teachers to be part of that process and let the kids get to know them, because that ties back into that engagement piece. These are some of the topics that we're going to, that we've worked on. So we started just trying to build that sense of community by creating some house rules, like what stays, what's that in here stays in here kind of philosophy, so that as you're going through these processes and you're getting more and more comfortable with each other, you might start sharing things with each other, and you want to feel that you're in a safe and caring environment. And so we've worked, kind of jumped around a little bit, and what we've decided to do is make sure that the I-Times are fitting what was currently going on in the school culture, so that we're supporting the kids where they need to be supported. And so we've made some adjustments as to what I-Times we address. So we go month... So we go month by month, based on where we feel the kids' needs are at. We started out, in October, I had a parent meeting. I sent out a BAR newsletter. I let the parents know, "Hey, this is the teachers that make up the team. Here's a little bit about them," and invited them to come to our Parent Advisory Council. And so the first meeting we had in October, we had 15 families represented at that meeting, and we had some that had left messages and emails as well, and just asked for their feedback, their concerns, what's working well, what's not, so that we could figure out how we're going to move forward in this process. We'll have another meeting on January 8th. I'll send out an invitation to all the parents. It's not something you have to sign up for and go to all three meetings. It's just, hey, if you have something to share, good or bad, we want to hear it so that we can address that. And then we'll follow up in April 9th, and then that will lead us forward for the next school year with the BAR programming. We also, with all of our interventions, we include the parents as much as we can. So that means phone calls, emails, the postcards are, we try to send those out when we see some positive things happening with the kids. We send postcards home to the families. And then also through Skyward, through Message Center, that's how I, for example, send out the newsletter, things like that. So I think at this time, it's, that's time.
Thank you, Ms. Papangatoa, or as the kids call her, KP3. Easier to say. You know, a, a really good school, a school that's hitting on all cylinders, a good organization, any good organization for that matter, is, it's about people and it's about programs. But more so, it's about people. And at Stillwater High School, you can take a, a great program like BAR, and you can introduce that, and you're not going to see success in that program without the right people in place. And I think Ms. Papangatoa is a testament to how BAR has gotten off to such a great start at Stillwater High School. You can just see and feel her enthusiasm here tonight, and that perpetuates throughout our school, and has really gotten BAR off to a great start at Stillwater High School. So thank you, Katie. When, when the transition team got together over the last 18 months, and we looked at what we wanted this major transition to look like, one of the pieces of research that we looked at that was really alarming is that in a four-year high school, the ninth grade year for students is typically the most challenging year. And if you think about it, it makes sense. It's a huge transition to come from a junior high to, or a middle school to, to a high school. Students are still going through adolescence. They're still trying to find out who they are. They're still trying to find their way. Now they're transitioning into a educational, educational programming that can be more challenging. And so national research shows that the ninth grade year, typically you have the most academic failures. And you may have the most behaviors. You, you may have some situations that arise that create academic failure. So at, at the end of the first quarter at Stillwater High School, we took a little bit of an academic dipstick, and what we found really was amazing. And that is that the success rate, the academic success rate of ninth graders was actually higher than the other grade levels in the school. And again, how does that happen? That happens with a program like BAR, and it happens with great people in place. Our teachers, our, our ninth grade teachers are going over and above. They are really putting in the time and the effort, the energy and the passion to, to make this work and to see some of these results here. Our counselors are going over and above. One, I had a conversation with a counselor, one in particular, who said, "You know, I was skeptical about BAR. I wasn't sure how this was going to work. But in my many, many years of being a counselor, in this year, the students that I need to know, that I need to work with, I've identified, we've identified those much faster than in any other previous academic year." And I think that's a testament to the structure of BAR, the weekly and daily connections, and the insurance that we're not going to let any student in ninth grade fall through the cracks. Am I doing this? One of the things that we found in terms of looking at academic success is that, surprise, surprise, there's a huge correlation between academic success measured by grades and literacy and numeracy skill. And so what we're finding is that the students that are struggling in ninth grade, they're, they've got some gaps in proficiency and literacy and numeracy. And so we have a lot of interventions in place. I think there was a previous slide that showed that there's over 200 students at the ninth grade level that have some sort of documented intervention. This is one area that I think we need to continue to keep our eye on, continue to keep our pulse on. How do we lift the literacy and numeracy skills of our incoming high school students to ensure that they are at a level where they can be successful academically in high One of the things that Katie helped implement was a survey, and this is a survey that focuses on the whole child. And so we, the survey asked a lot of questions about just who that young man or young woman is, and what they're currently experiencing in life. And we found some really, really interesting pieces of data that will, that allowed our teacher teams and our counselors to implement some intervention. So here's one that stood out a little bit. We had about one out of five students that took the survey, and most students in ninth grade took the survey, said, "You know what? I would like some support with study skills and organization." And there's a couple of really executive skills right there that are going to help you be successful in high school. So our teams are, our teams of teachers are putting together opportunities for students to grow and develop in those areas in the classroom. Another one is managing stress. When we talk about social and emotional learning, and we talk about, you know, what are, what young men and young women in our society are experiencing, just with the overall potential for stress in their life. Again, one out of five students in ninth grade said, "I'd like some help with managing stress." So again, Katie talked about the I-time lessons. We talked about the social, emotional opportunities to engage with students and get to know them at a deeper level. And by doing that, we are providing for them a much greater influence in terms of relationships and addressing some of the opportunities to manage stress. Principal Bach mentioned flex time. Our students are saying overwhelmingly that flex time is helping them manage some of that stress. So these pieces that, that we're putting together with some programming, we hope is addressing some of these needs for students. And another one is about one out of every 10 students are saying, "You know what? Need some support with making, with meeting making and keeping friends." So again, going back to those I-time lessons, the goal there is for teachers and students to get to know each other at a deeper level, but also for students to get to, to know each other at a deeper, deeper level. These teams of about 150 students, they, they may have a handful of classes together during the day, and that's purposeful. So teachers can get to know them at a deeper level, and they can get to know each other at a deeper level. And so this is just some of the data that we've collected after the first quarter that really shows that BAR is making a difference. So what are the next steps? District-wide, we're looking at a multi-tiered system of support, and these are some of the interventions that, that we know systematically and structurally will be successful at the high school level, as well as at every other level in the district. And we're looking to really align those with the BAR program and to really solidify it and make it better. We have registration coming up next month. Already looking forward to 18, 19. And one of the things that we'll be able to do, which will be awesome for this year, as Katie came on board in August, is now she'll be able to interact with the two middle schools. Let's talk about those eighth graders. Let's talk about who they are right now. Let's make sure that we have some purposeful scheduling for them, some purposeful interventions in place. Let's talk to middle school staff and really get to know these students even before they hit our floors running. That wraps it up, and I just wanted to take a pause here and have some time for any questions that you may have.
Director Stulend.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I'm so excited to hear the great news about how BAR is working. And I was part of the transition committee and enjoyed learning all about it, and I'm really excited it's working well. I have a question, and I'm not sure how easy, it may be hard to answer. How, can you explain how BAR intersects with the flex time, or if it, if it intersects with flex time?
I'm going to have Katie answer this one, because she works directly in flex time with ninth grade students, so she can talk about that.
Okay. So based on the team meetings, we had talked about these students that were really struggling, and we had tried so many interventions. And it, we just knew they needed more concentrated efforts, so I used flex time to create core support. And so I have 22 students in there right now that they are getting in, just really direct help. And plus, I'm in the team meeting, so then I can communicate, because I'm working directly with those kids. So then I go to the team meeting, and I can say what worked well, what didn't, what kind of adjustments can we make to help those kids be successful. So we are using flex time to help us with BAR.
That's great. And so then those students wouldn't necessarily have to stay in there, like permanently?
No.
Like they might be motivated to be able to-
Yeah, it's an intervention.
Right, to move out and take knitting or fantasy football or whatever else.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, this is, this is based on the fact that they were failing their core classes.
Okay. So this is, that's great. It's very smart.
Director Pelletier.
Thank you, Chair Hapner. I was also part of it, and I'm elated with everything that you're doing. Thank you. And I'm not surprised at all. I had full faith in you from the start, and I just want to, first of all, thank you so much for everything you're doing with this. I, I did have just, just a question, mild concern. You know, in looking at the survey, you can tell that the kids are clearly very, many of them are stressed. And I think some of them are, you know, the kids struggling academically, but also some of those high flyers. And we see that in the mental health work that we're doing in the district. And that's, you know, very, you know, I'm a mother of three, so I know that kids, I, I'm thankful that you have put together the opportunity for kids to speak up and, and express their feelings. Because I think if you ask them, they will tell you how they feel. So I guess my hope and question is, you know, what about the kids who are maybe getting As, and they don't, they don't really speak up as much, but you know that they're very stressed? And then how are you going to plan to carry BAR throughout their years through high school? Is there a plan for that yet?
I'll talk to the first one. So with the, with the survey and, and the students that we're working with, so we do like, I'm working with the teachers, do like the five of five. So come to, come to BAR, and you have your three kids that maybe you have lots of concerns about. But then also the kids that you think, you know, "Hey, they got it all together. They're doing great." And then as we start to talk, we look at a strength-based approach, what their strengths are. But we just actually, you know, it does happen where something pops for somebody. And so we have teachers who reach out to us, maybe that teach math or video. We've had teachers reach out to us from other areas, and then those kids are brought forward, and maybe they didn't come up because, you know, their grades were great. And all of a sudden, it's like, you know what? There is, there is a social, emotional piece that needs to be addressed. And so because we have the communication going between the BAR teachers and the other ninth grade teachers and the counselors, we're able to, to identify those kids. It's just been a really neat process that people are like, "Hey, now I know who to contact." Because who would you contact before? Like, you might not know who to contact if you're a teacher and you're feeling like, "Am I the only one that's seeing this?" So it's just been a neat, can do it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And, and I can just say, Director Pelletier, that, you know, from a standpoint of ninth grade, that laying that foundation of success, and I, I use the analogy of coming into high school almost kind of through a keyhole, okay, versus just opening up the door and having everybody run through. And we hope that, that, that the BAR approach this year will have a ripple effect. Students will be able to gain the necessary skills and the necessary knowledge through interventions and through getting to know them a lot better at the ninth grade level. And that's going to equate to greater success in 10 through 12. Instead of just opening up the door, they're coming through a keyhole, we're getting to know them, we're understanding what their strengths are, and what risks they might have, and how we might be able to reduce those so that they can be ultra-successful in high school.
Okay, thank you.
Director Pearson.
Thank you. I just want to thank you both, too, for the presentation and all the work that you're doing. I think it's great. It sounds like a really good program. I have just a couple of questions. Well, first, another thing I appreciate is how much you're involving families in the process and recognizing that that helps the kids. My concern is similar to Director Pelletier. If we have kids who are high flyers, who are doing really well academically, will they ever flag if they're, I mean, if there's severe mental health things going on, but they're still performing, will that ever flag with the teachers?
Well, and it has flagged, because we just had this addressed. One of the things is, with BAR, you have to talk about every student. And so there is no student that we will not talk about. And when, you know, so there, there'll be a follow-up, for example, to the survey that we did, to see, have we met those needs? Because there were a lot of other questions. And there was even a, a place for kids to make, just like, "I want some, this is something else I want you to know about me." And they could have answered anonymously, or they could have put their name. And, and we found that, you know, 88% of the kids put their name, and, and they were quite honest with, "Hey, this is where I'm at." And so the follow-up with that has been really important in finding avenues for them to be able to reach out if, you know, they need that connection with somebody, which is why we had like the woman from Family Means come in, so then she could give a face to the name. So that's also opened that possibility for kids to reach out if they feel a connection with her, maybe reach out to her. Matt and I have both presented in the I-times as well, and just getting the kids to understand that, "Hey, these adults are all here for you." And so we're hoping through relationship building that they're going to be comfortable with reaching out to us. But we do talk about, I mean, our goal is to talk about every single student that we have.
Good. Thanks so much.
Director Potatia.
Katie, one of the things I, I was curious about is you had a slide there that talked about drug and alcohol abuse. And I think the inclination many times is to say that students, but what about kids who are not users themselves, who have the issue in their families? How do you approach that? What do you do about that? Is that social worker, is, because for many kids, that can get in the way of their learning as well.
That was actually one of the questions on the survey. And so the kids that responded to that were following up with the chemical health specialist, and she is going to do a support group next semester during flex time for kids that said that they have a concern because they're in an environment or have a family member or someone that they love that is using drugs or alcohol. And so that is something that, we're trying to follow up on all of our student concerns, and so trying to get through the survey and, and all of the results and how to meet the needs of the kids.
And, and there might be some potential partnerships with Alateen and, and some of those organizations as well.
Yeah, we'd like to do more with the community kind of resources and outreach. And it's our first year, so we, you know, and I'm trying to learn what is available and what's out there, but that's a good idea, too. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, both of you.
Director O'Loughlin.
So I'll echo what everyone said. Thank you very much for, for all that you're doing to pour into our students and support all of their academic and social, emotional needs. I had just a couple of questions. I wanted to make sure, Mr. Kraft, I might have misheard you. Did you say that there was about 200, you said, students that, I don't know if I heard that number right?
Interventions, I think. Sure, yeah. It's 200, over 200 documented interventions. So a documented intervention is, for example, a teacher team, those four teachers get together, they're talking about students, and they may notice that, you know, "Hey, have you noticed Johnny has been kind of unengaged recently?" "Yeah, I've noticed." "Okay, hey, you noticed that in your class?" "Yeah." "Hey, I'm going to go, let's go talk to Johnny. Let's ask him what's going on." Okay? That would be, as simple as it sounds, that would be an example of a documented intervention. It could be all the way to what Katie talked about with core support, where a student might be failing a couple of classes and needs to go to get some academic assistance during flex time. We also have our Promise Fellow. So if you're familiar with the Promise Fellow opportunity, where we have some young men and young women that have just come out of college, and they're working with a number of our students in ninth grade, they've been identified and connected and creating those relationships and getting that academic support. So that's kind of that number of the- So, that's kind of that number of 200, yeah.
Okay, okay. So, my, a couple of follow-up questions. So, when I think about how do we build capacity, right, and so, that sustainability piece, and then also, if you can talk more to the alignment, kind of the other way, in terms of working with the middle school teachers and principals, so that ninth grade might not be the first time that, kind of this formal systematic approach toward making sure that we're, you know, checking in with all of our kids. So, just, I guess, yeah, the sustainability piece in terms of how we grow that with, you know, just the limited resources that we have, what that looks like, and then, yeah, that partnership with the middle schools that you talked about a little bit, I know. But I'm just curious to know more about that, what's in the works.
Well, I can just speak and just say that one of the eight strategies with BAR is, it really is an opportunity to address the transition, the very important transition that occurs. And so, it's about really literally starting with registration. It's ensuring that our students are in the right courses, and they're getting the right amount of support, and they're getting the right opportunities. In order to do that, you have to really get to know those students, and the challenge is, is that they're not attending your school. And so, it is that opportunity to engage with middle school staff, and it's very purposeful. It's going to start in January, and it's going to go through spring until those students literally transition and step into our building. Katie will be a big part of that. Counselors, all of our eight counselors will be a part of that, and even our staff, our ninth grade staff members will be a part of connecting and talking with eighth grade staff about appropriate placement in courses and getting to know students, again, before they even hit the ground running.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a quick question and a comment. What portion of your FTE is given over to BAR?
That's point five.
Okay. And then, my second question, or comment, I guess, is, as we talk about all this, it sounds like it's a huge job, and people have mentioned partnerships before, and I would hope that we would, you know, use Youth Service Bureau, obviously, you mentioned Family Means, and I keep pushing us to try to use Washington County, because I think they're getting off a little bit free in this whole thing. One of the think-tank comments that we got was, schools have stopped thinking they can do important mental health work by themselves. And I think a big portion of this is obviously working with, in mental health situations, and even before it gets to that, as other board members have said. So, I don't know if you do outreach programs, or if you go and make this same presentation to Washington County Youth Service Bureau and some of those others, and kind of, you know, I don't want to say it's their responsibility, but it is their responsibility, as well as ours, to make sure that these kids are taken care of. So, just, I may mention your name to a county commissioner, and hopefully, he'll get a hold of you, and you can go make a presentation to them, because I think it's important work we should be doing.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you so much.
Our next report is World's Best Workforce, Dr. McDowell.
Board Chair Hapner, School Board. Tonight, I'm here to present the World's Best Workforce Summary Report for the 2016-2017 school year. I have a little bit different format tonight than what we've done in the past couple of years to try and make it, have a little bit more flow about what World's Best Workforce is. But before I begin with the slideshow, the reminder is that the World's Best Workforce Summary Report is a report of last year, based on 15-16 data. It's not about last year's data and what we're doing right now. It's truly kind of an autopsy report of what happened, and that's different than what is the World's Best Workforce Plan. So, in the past couple of meetings, we've had a couple at-work sessions, we've talked about the World's Best Workforce, and we've had a couple of different documents. We've had the World's Best Workforce Summary Document, and that's got all of the data on the inside of it, right? So, that's your summary report. That's what we're going to be talking about, all the stuff in here. And then, we've got the World's Best Workforce Plan. So, this is what's in progress right now, and that's not the emphasis of this report tonight. It is the 16-17, what happened in 16-17. So, with that, our World's Best Workforce Summary Report is a requirement as part of statute that came about in 2013. The World's Best Workforce became something that all Minnesota school districts are required to, and required to engage in. And the World's Best Workforce is comprised of five main areas. That is basically school readiness, third graders reading well, achievement gap racially and economically, students that are college and career-ready, and all students will graduate. Those are the five areas that we have to set goals for, based on data, and we have to decide what metrics we're going to use to measure how well we're doing in the strategies. I've lost my slideshow. There are three other areas that you can see in there that are in red on this slide, and that's gifted and talented professional development and access to excellent teachers. And the reason they're in red is those are support areas. The only one of those red areas that gets reported to MDE as part of the summary report is access to excellent teachers. Gifted and talented and professional development are not a part of the official report that goes to MDE, but the school districts are required to report on what they do in those areas at the local level. So, moving forward on our World's Best Workforce website, there'll be a separate section that is for gifted and talented, and a separate section for our staff development for that year, and then, the World's Best Workforce Summary Report. So, that's how we include those. But what goes to MDE as the report that's actually due tomorrow, the 15th, are the five areas in the light tan, and then, a report on access to excellent teachers. So, the flow of this presentation is going to follow that report that gets submitted to MDE. And the first part of that report is a requirement of your committee, and your committee needs to be made up of students, parents, community members, teachers, and administrators. And our community, our district advisory committee currently is at 15 members, and it includes all of those groups. In our report, though, what you have as a board decided is that there are a couple areas that are just as important, if not more important, than the five areas that MDE has said with World's Best Workforce. And those two areas are social-emotional and behavioral development and student engagement. And on our World's Best Workforce Summary Report, which is the internal side of your results policy, those are the top two categories. And what, to this point, we measure and talk about and find important are things like dismissals, which are currently down as of last year, as of this report, students who access mental health. So, we just had a discussion with BAR. So, in 16-17, we saw an increase, and we're up to, in 16-17, we had 711 individual touchpoints. So, that's where a student goes and accesses a student advocate at the elementary level. A student goes and accesses a school psychologist in our building. So, these are in-building access points. That was one thing, two years ago, that the board said, how can we measure how many kids are accessing this? And so, that's now in the report.
Is that 711 different kids, or just visits?
Visits. Could be, kids could have gone multiple times, but visits. The third bullet there, however, is ongoing therapeutic sessions. So, this, again, back to the BAR conversation. These are visits that take place by professional mental health providers, ongoing. So, kids who visit with someone from Family Means over a course of time, kids that we have knowledge of that go to private counseling, students who go to Youth Service Bureau for help. So, these are ongoing therapeutic sessions by outside mental health providers. The other area is student engagement, and we measure our attendance rate, which historically hovers between 93 and 94 percent. We monitor our secondary extracurricular participation, and while this part says it's up 1,447, from 15-16 to 16-17, that's an area that our assessment group and our data group is working on cleaning up, because what we have found is that, at the middle schools and at the high school, our data hasn't been getting reported exactly the same way. So, in some instances, we have situations where we're counting, we've been counting this club in this building, but not this club in this building, or we haven't had a good enough data, clean enough data set where we're measuring non-duplicates. So, the real story behind this number is, our participation rates are increasing. While this is the flat, or the straight data, I would have the question of, really, I don't know that it's truly up that much, but to this point, we don't have a clean enough data set, but that's what our crew is working on, is how we clean that up now that we've made this transition.
Slide, and that's, what is a dismissal?
A dismissal, under state statute, is any time a student is removed for over one day of school. So, dismissals include suspensions, they include expulsions. So, in our district, these are mostly made up of one day or more suspensions. This, again, could be one student having multiples, or it could be multiple students. The good news here is that we are on a downward trend. If you look inside of World's Best, inside of the document here, we have been on a downward trend in our number of dismissals year after year after year, which is a great trend to be on.
So, a dismissal, as you've defined it, is a day they're not in school?
Correct. It's a day where we remove them from school for, at least, one day.
Yeah, because some schools, and you know more about that than I do, have in-school suspension.
Yep, and that does not count as a dismissal, because in-school suspension is typically, well, in-school suspension, you're still in school. We're still providing the educational service, just in a different setting. So, a dismissal, you have to be out of the school setting for one or more days.
Director Pearson.
So, that doesn't necessarily measure better behavior, per se, maybe just a different way that the district is handling?
I would suggest it does, because the item, the behaviors that would get you dismissed from school are much more significant than behaviors that would keep you in an in-school suspension situation.
Okay.
Yeah. If I may, it would seem to me dismissals are most likely if you're a danger to yourself or others.
Or typically, a repeat. So, we use progressive discipline. So, you think of it as you get in trouble for some of the first time you get talked to, and then, it progresses all the way up, and then, it's in-school suspension, and then, you're dismissed for a day, or dismissed for three days, or however that works. But the fact that it's going down, for us, it tells us a couple of things. One, that we're maybe seeing less of the higher-end behaviors. Two, we're having more success with keeping kids in school, even though they're getting in trouble or doing things that would get them in trouble, we're keeping them in school rather than sending them home. Those are the two things that we would look at that way. So, it's good. It's, we want that to keep going down. The other, so, back to student engagement, the third bullet there, students who failed a minimum of one course at the secondary, that's also going down. That's a great thing. So, I anticipate next year being up here, based on the presentation we just had, that that number continues, because our, one of our big focuses is, how are we supporting students, both socially and academically, at school? And the result of that, if our interventions are effective, would be a continued reduction in failures of one course. And then, the last bullet there is the Bridge to Excellence Survey. And so, before I go to the next slide, this is typically one that the numbers cause us to really, there's a ton of numbers with this one. And this is a survey that was put into place at the onset of Bridge to Excellence by the board to try and measure student engagement. And so, it's been given every year, and it, what it does is, it surveys approximately 700 students in grades three, six, nine, and 12. So, a total of 700 students roughly is our sample size, so it's a great sample size, in those four grades currently. So, we've given it four years in a row. What I've tried to do this year to help is put up a slide that simplifies trend. And so, when I say trend, think of straight-line trends, which means that you could go a couple years, let's say, 70%, 70%, and then hit an 80, and then you might do 69. The trend is straight-line down, even though you have a bubble in there, the trend over four years. So, here's what we discovered. We kind of have a break, if you look through, and this is what's on the back, top-back side of your results policy. We kind of have a breakpoint of about 80%. So, that'll be my first point, is, we're talking 80%. So, kids, the green is that, in these four grade levels, at least 80% of the kids, that's a high mark. At least 80% of the kids agree with that statement as a straight-line trend over four years. That is exceptional to be in that green. The yellow, and there's only one, means that the straight-line trend is working its way up to the 80% mark, but it is just barely hovering right in there, and we have one area in there. And then, the red is simply signifying that, as a trend over four years, we are hovering below 80% of kids agree with that consistently. Now, there are a few anomalies in here, because as you try to simplify data, you, the trade-off is, you can't cover every situation. So, the couple of things, as I talk through this, again, I'll remind you, this is trying to just say, over four years, here's what the trend looks like, so you don't have to look at each piece of percentage in there. To get any further knowledge of what's going on, we would have to start asking questions. So, the thing to note is that the first two areas in learning, and the first area for third grade and sixth grade in environment, and then, the first two areas in support, are areas that less than 80%, remember, that's a high mark, though. So, 80% is saying, so it could be 79% are saying that. It's less than 80, so it's just a visual. And then, in supports, the last one, where percent of students who strongly agree or agree that at least one adult in their school knows what interests them, that's hovering at a yellow. That just simply means, as you look at those numbers, if you look at them, they have a trend that's going up towards 80, really close or hovering, or they may have started at 80, dropped back down, and are working back up to 80. But the trend is that, for whatever reason, we're not being, we're not able to consistently get 80% of our kids to say they agree with that. So, what does this mean for you as a board? My opinion is, it means we have to do a couple of things. We have to decide in the red areas, what more question, what questions do we have about those that we want to find answers to? The second thing is, after five years, are these truly the questions that we want to be asking kids to find out what we want to find out? Because now, we're coming into that fifth year. The last thing is, I've arbitrarily picked 80% as kind of a, as a mark. As a school board, one thing you could do is say, what do we want our goal, what's our mark we want? We want, we want this percentage of kids to say they agree with these statements year after year after year. So, that's kind of why I put this together this way, was hopefully to visually give you some fodder to think about with this, because the survey's really the board's survey on this. It's your local data, and it's the one thing that makes our World's Best Workforce unique. But it seemed to try and simplify it might help, as we have further conversations and work sessions about our World's Best Workforce going forward, is, does it make sense? Are we capturing the data we want? And what are the set points you want with this survey?
Just to clarify a point, it looks like on there, like, it's third through sixth grade, nine through 12, but I hear you say it's three and six, and nine and 12.
Correct. It's four grades, three, six, nine, 12.
So, every year, there are different kids being asked these questions?
Correct. And that's the way the survey was originally designed back in the first year of Bridge to Excellence.
Okay. Director Loughlin.
So, Dr. McDowell, am I reading this correctly, that where it says, the percent of students who strongly agree or agree that they feel safe at school? the percent of students who strongly agree or agree that they feel safe at school? So for the third and the sixth graders, less than eighty percent of our students can say that?
What it says is, as a trend, so if you follow that across, what, what it says is, this is where you have to ask that question, right? You go back and you say, okay, it is, it started at eighty-seven, it went to ninety, it dropped to eighty-six, and it's at seventy-eight. And so we have to ask the question, what's happening there that we're on a downward trend? It isn't that they're low scores, it's just what's happening there. Now, the caveat I would add is, remember, we had a huge transition now. So as we look at this now the next year, that's the next thing we've got to ask about this data, is you've had a significant change in what kids experience, and so do we survey sixth graders, because they're no longer in the elementary schools? But yes, to your point, it's, that is technically what it's saying. But again, eighty percent is a significant amount of kids.
Right, it's just, it's still very alarming to me in terms of what, you know, how that can manifest itself, and how different students, you know, what that means. And so being able to maybe disaggregate some of the data. I know you said that follow-up questions might be appropriate, and you know, this seems like it'd be one of those instances?
Absolutely.
Where being able to do some follow-up with classroom teachers and administrators, just to get at the heart of, okay, how is that, where's that coming from, and how's that showing up?
And that, your point is exactly why I wanted to simplify this in color, because this is what you're asking, and what some of the other board members are asking, these are the questions we need to grapple with, is, is it significant? Right?
Director Potatik.
A couple, and I'm at the same place Paula is on that issue. The one that jumps out at me is a safety issue. I mean, a little while ago, open forum, we heard a teacher express concern about safety. I think almost any administrator that I know wants all kids to feel safe and secure. They shouldn't have to look over their shoulder, their back, or whatever. So I think the fact that it's there, it draws attention, is very significant. I'm not positive it measures engagement. It might be a barrier to engagement, or insecurity, but I think this, those kinds of questions, I haven't gone through the whole list, are pretty significant.
I would agree, and the, so this is, as a team, these are the things that we talk about as well. So for example, if that were a question, where I would be attacking that is asking, what's our follow-up with kids when we see a trend starting, starting to dip down? What do we do with kids? Are we having focus groups around that question to get at it? Because remember, this is self-reporting survey information. So you, if you don't do follow-up to it, you can only take it at its face value, because you don't know what the situation was. Particularly with our younger students, is we aren't asking questions like in the last twenty-four hours. Right? So if you've got kids who, for example, have a bad week, and you give them the survey, that could impact how they answer the questions on the survey. So we have to, we have to do follow-up.
Director Pearson.
And I just wanted to clarify, we've been looking at these numbers, but we haven't necessarily made goals around them, right? We haven't gotten that deep.
We don't make goals around this, and we haven't to this point had goals around them.
Director Stevland.
Oh, I just had a question. So the student engagement one that this is, is a part of the Bridge to Excellence survey? At the bottom of the actual report, there's the Minnesota Student Survey. Can you just tell, can you just explain a little bit about how those are different? And how, when they're both given? And who gets them?
Yep, so the last time the Minnesota State Survey was given is fifteen sixteen.
Okay.
We don't give that survey again until eighteen nineteen. And it only goes to the grades there, so fifth grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, and eleventh grade. And it's given statewide, and it's a random sampling across the district. So it doesn't give you the year-to-year-to-year data to try and track.
Is it our kids too?
It is our kid.
Sorry.
But so then, sorry.
Director Stevland.
Sorry, just to follow up then, so then the student engagement survey is being done every year?
Correct.
On those grades, three, six, nine, and twelve?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so the areas that we do measure for the World's Best Workforce, again, this is sixteen seventeen data, goals based on fifteen sixteen data. So the five areas, so we have the first area with a result of fifty-nine percent. We have, like the state, and as our conversations at work sessions have, we've had, with this idea of all students ready for school, what do you really use to measure that? What are you measuring? To this point, what we've landed on is, has been our screening of third grade, or thirty, three-year-olds and four-year-olds. So the goal for sixteen seventeen was to increase the amount of students that we screen. And a little background, the reason that we screen third graders, or three-year-olds and four-year-olds, is to find out which students need supports, so we can get them their supports that they need, so they are ready for kindergarten. This last year, you'll remember, we instituted our Ready, Set, Go conferences across the district. And so I'll talk a little bit more about that later, but that's your, that's the fifty-nine percent. So as a screening percentage, we have reached that, we met that goal for MDE goal. The second one is the seventy-nine percent. We had a goal that a hundred percent of our third graders would reach their proficiency goals using FAST. So our FAST assessment tool by the end of the seventeen school year. We made seventy-nine percent, which actually is a really good percentage with regard to getting kids, not that we can't approve upon it. But what we've, what we've learned is, we need to be more realistic about goals that we set. While, when we put up a goal that's less than a hundred percent, it does not equate to us saying, we don't think all kids should learn, but we want to set realistic goals. And so, in all fairness, that probably wasn't the most realistic goal. The third one is our goal around all academic, or all economic and racial achievement gaps will be closed. And so the way that we've been measuring that, and the way that MDE measures that, is with our MCA data. So whether we like it or not, that's how that gap gets measured. And so on the left, what you see are the fifteen sixteen results by individual group, to include free and reduced lunch, free and reduced meals on the bottom. In reading and math, those are the proficiency levels by that individual group. On the right-hand side, it's the sixteen seventeen, same individual groups, reading and math. There are three areas that I have highlighted in black, so that you can read them. Those are the three individual groups that we made the goal. We increased for those three. The other groups, we did not increase the percentage. The reason that the top American Indian reading group says an A is because on that testing day, there were too, there were too few students to count as what's called a cell. So there were less than twenty kids that tested in reading. There's a math score, because evidently on the math testing day, we had enough kids in that cell to qualify as a group. So that's why you see no score in reading, but you do see a score in math. The fourth area, what we've been using is our eleventh graders who take the ACT. We've been tracking that data on the cohort average, and our goal was to get to twenty-three. We got to twenty-three point three in that one, so we made it. And then the last goal was to increase our four-year graduation rate to ninety-five percent. The year previous, we were at ninety-three percent. So we dropped to ninety percent. The interesting thing here is that if you look at our five-year rate, it jumps to ninety-eight point one. And if you look at our six-year rate last year, it drops to, or raises to ninety-eight point six. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. But it, what it tells us is our kids aren't leaving our system. They're just taking five and six years to get the credits that they need to get up at that percentage. So we can talk in the future, and we've addressed that in the seventeen eighteen World's Best Workforce plan, as far as what we're working on. But again, this is for sixteen seventeen. The next area that MDE asks us to report on is how are you identifying the needs in your World's Best Workforce? And so that's what this slide attempts to explain. With regard to the five areas, we have school readiness, so all kids are ready for school. To this point, so to this plan, we've been using screening percentages. One thing we knew in fifteen sixteen and in sixteen seventeen is we didn't have a consistent K readiness entry tool, which we do now. But at that point in history, we didn't. And so that's what has been limiting us to answer that question. Again, no different than what the, what MDE is struggling with, to really nail it down, so it gives us good data. Read well by third grade, we use MCA data to judge how we're doing with our read well and with our FAST. The thing that MDE give, or that MCA gives us is the breakdown by strand, by individual group. And so our MCA data, if we look at it trend-wise, which isn't new information, and if you look here, it stayed pretty flat. And so it gives us that suggestion that we need to continue to focus on literacy as we move through our elementary grades. Closing the achievement gap, our MCA math data and our reading data suggests that our largest gaps going into sixteen seventeen were between our white students and our Hispanic Latino students, and then a big gap between our non-free and reduced and our free and reduced. So that's what would suggest where you target your areas. And then for reading, it was non-free and reduced, free and reduced, and the gap between non-special ed and special ed students, as far as how they are proficient on those tests. In the area of all students career in college ready, what we, what MDE looks at to see that, to see how many kids are ready for career in college is, one, the ACT score, and two, MCA math. And so what we did is looked at that as well. And so our MCA, or ACT math and science, CRB stands for College Readiness Benchmarks. So when a student takes an ACT exam, they get a cohort score, they get a master score. They also get a score in each one of the areas, and then they get a, I'm ready for college as a freshman score. The CRB is, I'm the, I'm ready for college. So it's the percent of students taking that test that the test suggests are ready for college. What you will see in that data is that our scores in math and science strands on the ACT are dipping just a little bit. The interesting fact is that our MCA eighth grade math data, while it suggests we should focus in math and free and reduced, is actually inching up a little bit. And so you heard, again, the previous presentation, you heard Matt Kraft and Katie talk about, what are those interventions between eighth grade and high school? We have the data to show that we have a little bit of work to do in, between eighth grade and high school, because something, something's happening between inching up in eighth grade math and then ACT inching down in eighth, in eighth grade, or in eleventh grade. So we have to dig into that. That's what the data shows us. And then all students graduate, we talked about that a little bit. Our four-year, which is what the World's Best Workforce judges as four-year graduation rate, ours is at ninety percent. The state goal is to be at ninety percent, so we're still at ninety percent for graduation rate. We're still right there. But it's our six-year rate and our four-year rate that are up really where we want them to be. And so it's a transition thing we have to focus on. My, I'm anticipating, and the team is anticipating with ninth grade moving to the high school, and we've talked about this a little bit, that that's going to change that quite a bit. The one thing I will say about the data, it's not all doom and gloom, because if you looked off the MDE's report card, the thing that this information on the slide doesn't tell you is that in all the areas, we're above the state average in math and in reading on our achievement scores. It isn't about, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, it's, here's where we are, how do we get better? Here's where we are, how do we get better? So don't take any of the information as doom and gloom, and that the sky is falling. That's not at all the message. It is one of constant improvement, and how do we meet the needs of more kids that we're not meeting? How do we drill down into the individual groups with things like bar and the like?
I apologize if I didn't catch this. When you, under school readiness, say no consistent K entry tool, now we're using Ready, Set, Go conferences as that tool?
We use that this year, and then we are going to be shifting to TS Gold of some sort monitoring, if I'm saying that correct. Excellent, I got it right.
So it'll be Ready, Set, Go conferences in addition to TS Gold, whatever you need?
Yes.
It's a bit complicated.
Okay, stop. I'll catch you some other time.
Ready, Set, Go will be the format, TS Gold will be the tool.
Director Potatik.
Thank you. Rhetorically, I'm asking this, because to me, this is very, very important. Like you've mentioned, the good news, these are benchmarks you're paying attention to. And more so than ever has been done before.
Correct.
So I mean, that's, that's very, very positive. One that I have asked a number of times, and I'm very concerned about it because it's so relevant, is the read well by third grade. And the goal is to have those numbers go up, and I agree with that. The part, though, that's not required by this report, that I hope is not forgotten, what happens to those third graders who don't hit the mark? What kind of interventions? And I ask it at this point, just rhetorically, because I think that's, that's pretty crucial.
And I'll answer it as, I'll answer it globally. We have several interventions, and actually, state statute now requires that all students that are not meeting grade level proficiency have an intervention in place until such time that they do meet grade level proficiency.
Because this is so important for later success or completion of school. This is where some of your dropouts come, et cetera.
It is, it's the reason why we're focusing so much time and effort with Karen Lateral and our work with our literacy this year to expand it next year. The next section of the World's Best Workforce requires you to share what systems, strategies, and supports are you, do you have in place for three groups? Your students, then your teachers, and your principals, and then as a district as a whole. So I'll just quickly go through the bullet points, there are a lot of them here. We have quite a few systems and supports that are in place. So our, our system of assessment, really what we're focusing on in our system of assessment has to do with our, our literacy programming with the benchmarking we're doing, with the screening tools we're using, with the, with the assessment tools that we're using in answering that question, Director Potatik, of what are the interventions we need to do? So a lot of our system of assessment is really focused at the elementary level right now. As you're well aware of, and it's not new this year, but it's, even in fifteen sixteen and sixteen seventeen, we were putting into place social emotional programming, actually E-12, through things like our, I lost my train of thought, I apologize. Through our second step, sorry, lost my train of thought. Through second step, so our second step program all the way up through elementary, that starts in preschool. And then our literacy-based engagement software, what that is? That is things like Storia. Those are the electronic or literacy-based software programs that we use in addition to textbooks. We have that across our elementary schools. With regard to teachers and principals, we've been working in sixteen seventeen even to increase the amount of knowledge they have and applicability they have with regard to the benchmark data that we're getting in. We've also put a focus in sixteen seventeen on school improvement planning alignment. There's a huge need, there has been in our district, to align what are the school improvement plans that our principals are coming up with their staff, and how that relates to the World's Best Workforce and the strategic plan. It all needs to be aligned, and we need to be able to say, this is working, this isn't working. And so there's a big bush that started last year that's continued through this year. Our curriculum review process, our process was actually adopted in two thousand and eight, and we have morphed into a continuous improvement curriculum review process, meaning that essentially we have, all year long, we're evaluating all of our different content areas, and then the areas that seem to really pop up as areas that there's a system-wide issue. So for example, literacy was one that's been identified as, we got to do something different here, because we're delivering it inconsistently across. That comes off of the, what we call the little wheel, and goes into the big review process. What do we need to do differently? How do we need to do it? What materials do we need to look at purchasing? So it's a continuous improvement model for curriculum review. And then our principal evaluation tools, we use, for teachers, we use a tool out of the University of Washington called the Five D Tool that is the measurement rubrics that your administrators in the district use to evaluate your teachers on an annual basis. And then we use a tool developed from the McCrell Group for our principal evaluations. Principals are evaluated on an annual basis, and all of those rubrics in there are aligned to best practice. And then standard available classroom technologies, that's what John Perry's been working on. Does every classroom have a projector? Does every classroom have the tools that they need on the technology side to actually teach at a basic level? And then at the district, these are items that you're well aware of. So our learning leaders that meet once a month, our, we have a PLC focus. We've instituted rubrics last year, so they can actually monitor how We've instituted rubrics last year so they can actually monitor how well their PLCs are going. We have a district literacy committee. We have a district technology council. We really have put together a coordinated professional development plan that involves a lot of input from our teachers in figuring out what do we truly need to be spending time on. And then we've had a cultural responsive teaching focus implementing RC across the board in elementary school. Because remember, this is last year. That moves us on to access to excellent teachers. So this has to be reported to MDE, and it is reported in, really tracking three areas. In 1617, we had approximately 537 FTEs. That's not people, that's FTEs, because you have partial people in there. But MDE, point threes, point fours, right? It's hard to visualize how that works. But MDE defines inexperienced teachers as our teachers who have been in the business three years or less. They define unqualified teachers as teachers who do not have a teaching license but are possibly working towards it, or we've given them a community expert or something along those lines, and are teaching a course on a variance of some sort. And then out-of-field teachers are teachers who have a teaching license but are teaching out of field. So for example, you could have an English teacher, and at the secondary level, you might be short one section of social studies class. The teacher is willing to do it, you can get a variance for that teacher, that teacher teaches that one section. That's how those three areas are defined. You can see Stillwater's percentages of the 537 in each one of those areas, and then regional is the metro area. So you can see in each one of those, we're well below what the regional percentage is for those. And you can't help the inexperienced one, you're always going to have inexperienced. The unqualified and out-of-field are things that we're always working towards. It's how do you get people appropriate license for those positions? Unfortunately, there are areas that it's really, really difficult to find people, and so you have to figure out how you manage that. The other things that impact our access to excellent teachers is, first is right of assignment. Right of assignment is the ability for the administration to put teaching staff where they need to be. In our district, our contract language is such that we have right of assignment inside of buildings, but we don't have right of assignment across buildings. So that isn't good or bad, it just is what it is. And so if you have a teacher in building A that you would decide you really need to have in teacher, or in building B, we don't have right of assignment to make that unilateral decision. Again, not good or bad, it just is what it is. Inside of a building, we have, principals have right of assignment inside of a building. Hiring practices, we are in a spot, and your principals would tell you, that we don't just take anybody in Stillwater. We repost and repost and repost. We interview and interview and interview and interview if we can't find the right person for the right position. And before we even interview, we utilize a universal screener tool. Long and short of it is, we expect candidates score a 50 out of 100 before we'd even ask them in for an interview on that tool. And it's a tool that gauges whether they are student-centered or more teacher-centered. And so obviously, we're looking for more student-centered teachers. And then finally, our HR department has, in the last two years, put into play a significant plan of how we can recruit and retain more staff of color and more staff that are bilingual. And those types of things look like going to more job fairs, going to more unique job fairs. For example, there's a job fair coming up that we just heard about today that focuses on Latino teachers. And so our HR department is spending a lot of time there. Professional development is another area that's reported. We have a district-wide professional development team that consists of 29 members, and I won't go through all of these, but what you can see on the right were the professional development areas of focus in 2016, 2017. And then finally, gifted and talented, which is not an area that's reported to MDE, it's at the local level, and what you're required to report is how are you identifying students for gifted and talented? Right now, we have about 10% of our student population that qualifies for gifted and talented, and we have between 3% and 5% that would qualify for GATE programming. So how do we do that? We have universal screening for all third graders, which is in addition to an identification criteria. So it's achievement scores, it's an ability score, and then teacher and parent input that helps make a decision as to what's best for those students that need that end of the spectrum of what we have to deliver for education. And then for students that, or for teachers that are not in necessarily the gifted program, we offer professional development opportunities. Opportunities with Diane Hecox, who's an expert in gifted education, Hamlin Conferences, Hormel Symposium on Gifted Education, and of course, the Minnesota Gifted Education Conference that we send teachers to to get more knowledge about gifted and talented. And then the other things that we do just regarding acceleration, we do have a current policy, R 1.5, that is our protocol for when we would have a student-parent request to accelerate. That would be a great acceleration. And then the great accelerations that are typically used are great acceleration process, the Iowa Scale of Acceleration, and that's an area that Denise Cody works closely with. And so when we get a request, those requests go to Denise Cody's department, and she works with the families with regard to that.
Director Pearson.
The universal screening of third graders is new, right?
As of last year.
And were more students identified through that process? Could we tell that?
I will turn that over to Ms. Cody.
Yes, more students than were identified in second grade.
Significantly more? Okay.
And that's why we went to third grade, because we were seeing, as we repeated the assessment of second and third grade, a significant jump in the number of kids. We felt like we were getting a better picture of their needs as a third grader rather than a second grader.
Okay, and what about students that may not have been? Because before, it was more identified on, I mean, it wasn't every student before, right? So do we think more students were identified that wouldn't have been tested before? That we had more?
Not necessarily, because most of them are still meeting the achievement criteria.
Okay.
Catching more because of the third grade.
So more of that than that it's all the kids? Okay, thank you.
And with that, that is the report that goes to MDE as part of our World's Best Workforce, summary report for 1617. And then the only thing that I'll leave you in the public with is, as we've been talking at our last meetings, we have the plan in place, which is what we've been working off of to try and understand and learn more about World's Best Workforce's impact and what questions we need to be asking moving forward.
And I think board members are aware we'll be working with an advisory committee to try and get an advisory committee in place going forward.
That's correct.
For 1819, it would be.
That's correct.
All right, thank you for that.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See if we can get this, and then we'll take a break. 2017, 2018 Revised Budget Report, Ms. Hoheisel.
Tonight, I would like to discuss the book that was handed to you, I believe it was about two weeks ago now during a board session, the Revised Budget Book. I will be looking to have action taken by the board January 4th, so we won't be looking for action tonight. The purpose of the presentation is to present an overview of how the budget works in an annual cycle, provide a summary of funds and significant changes from where we were in June, review revenue sources and expenditure categories. The way the budget cycle works is, in the spring, we work through assumptions and estimates and come up with a preliminary budget that is typically adopted by the board in June. It's based off of the approved goals, budget adjustments, current laws and regulations, and enrollment projections. The stage we're at now is the revised budget process, adopted during the middle of the school year, and it's based on updated information. So anything that we didn't know in the spring of 2017, which would be our actual October 1 enrollment numbers based on our projected October, or our projected student enrollment numbers, and 2017 legislation, typically, we, at least historically, we haven't been fortunate enough to have the legislative process complete by the time the school board is adopting a preliminary budget, so this is reflective of that also. In regards to the general fund, we have operating revenues of $104,995,602, and we have operating expenditures of $107,511,394. I'd like to remind you that this is all of the money. So this is money that is set aside for reserve, assigned, all of our categories put together that fall under the general fund. We break it out later as we work to get to the assigned money, which we've talked about, that's more of the money that there's some, there's a little bit more control over in the number that we typically gauge off of. So just so you realize, this is everything. The revenues increased by just over 1.2 million. State aids, during the preliminary budget process, we were estimating that we would receive a 1.5% in state aid on the general ed formula, and we actually received two, so that's part of that change. Special education aid, this is based more off of what we actually received and recognized a year ago. So we're not going to receive less revenue than we did the year prior, so it becomes adjusted based on what our audit was. We move forward with that. And then grants. And expenditures increased by $2.869 million, and it's, we actually have actual staff and now not estimated staff. We have grants, changes in transportation, and tuition. The fund balance, this just moves it from percentages to dollar amounts. Again, in total, our fund balance for the general fund is $18.8 million. However, when we take away the reserved categories, the assigned categories, those various pieces, we actually have $7 million that we estimate to be available at the end of the year as an unassigned fund balance. Now, I'd like to say, because there's a little bit of variation, the projected unassigned fund balance is 6.5% of total expenditures. You've heard me say before, usually a million dollars equates to about a percent of our fund balance. You can see there's a little variation, but, so that's why we see $7 million, but 6.5% fund balance. When we're having discussions about fund balance and the impact, I will always defer to approximately a million dollars as a percent of fund balance. It's based on annual expenditures or your total expenditures, so that number sort of varies. That's why I use the million-dollar mark.
I'm very sorry. We're having some technical problems, and so your PowerPoint is not coming across on the screen at home. I would be happy to put the slides under the document camera so people at home and in the audience can see what you're talking.
Sure, thank you. We are, we will be moving to the next one, just to point out that the board is still maintaining their goal of 5% unassigned fund balance. It has been met. Food service, revenues changed mainly because of the addition of adding Pankalo to our operation. And then expenditures increased. We did a one-time software, some of you who have children in the district know it as Meal Viewer. And then actual staffing, which all of the budgets will be reflective of that now. And you can see that food, the food service fund is relatively balanced. Community service, revenues increased due to school readiness enrollment and grants, and expenditures increased due to expanding programming at the Pony Act Activity Center or PAC and grant purchases. Again, you can see that revenues for community service are projected to be higher than expenditures, and therefore, maintaining a balanced budget and a nice fund balance. Our operating funds, this is back to the Budget 101 conversation. This is kind of what the funding that goes in to operate us, the school system, on a day-to-day basis. So it's, we need the general fund, we need to feed the kids, we need to bus the kids, and the community education programming and capital go into that. Those budgets fall between revenues of being $115 million and expenditures of being just shy of $118 million, however, maintaining a fund balance of $20 million total. Now to the non-operating funds. This revenue increased, this fund actually did not, has not had revenue other than interest earnings since we sold the bonds. So the only change in revenue is the projected amount of interest earnings that we have on the money that's still available for us to invest. And expenditures decreased due to timing of projects. This is our most, one of our more challenging funds as far as timing. We see that in the summer. We saw that when we were adopting a revised budget last year, that sometimes if we project it's going to be done in June, and then we now, you know, by the time we're doing the preliminary, we now know it's going to be done in August. It's double-counted. We unwind that a little bit, timing of projects, expenditures decreased, and you can see at the end of 2017, 18, we are projecting to have just shy of $3.3 million. I would like to say that is taking out the $3.5 million for the transportation terminal. So it is assumed that we will spend the $3.5 million, and we still have that money remaining.
Director Pearson.
Sorry, before you go on, can you explain why capital is in operating and not non-operating?
Yes, so capital by state statute is a reserved account, but it's viewed as kind of the descriptor as far as what could fall into capital. Are day-to-day things that have a shelf life of a certain either dollar amount or a shelf life of over a number of years?
Okay.
Textbooks. We need it for daily operations. The students need that technology. Could apply to capital items that are, meet a dollar threshold, meet a life cycle, meet different things. So that's why it goes in, because it truly is to the operation of the school district.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Then we have debt service, fund balance, and OPEB debt service. We levy for 105% of our debt service, our payments, whether it's both principal and interest, in the event that, for whatever reason, we do not collect on those payments, whether it is deficiency in people paying the county. It's kind of the guaranteeing that we'll have 100% of the money that we need to pay our bills. They collect 105, and then it offsets itself the next cycle once we get through. So you sometimes see variations between revenues and expenditures and fund balance, but that's guided by what the state allows with formulas, and so you'll never see that balance grow too large. And then our non-operating funds are, again, the things that are essential to function, just not necessarily needed on a day-to-day, building construction, debt service, OPEB debt service. Expenditures far exceed revenues on this slide. Again, it comes down to the building construction. We're spending down the bond proceeds. Fiduciary funds, trust funds, $25,000, money that comes in. Again, we're just the agent. Money that comes in is money that leaves, and there is a fund balance. Again, it's timing, things that haven't been spent. And then our total budget revenues, we are at, I'm estimating $125-plus million, and expenditures of $148-plus million, leaving a fund balance of just shy of $26 million. This is, this continues to decrease for us. Again, we were close to $200,000 when we collected the $97.5 million, and we'll start leveling out now that that fund is close to being spent down. It is anticipated that I will not be presenting another budget revision for 1718. The big factors that typically adjust budgets have come to fruition. Most contracts at the time that this budget was created were settled. The ones that weren't wouldn't have an impact on this year based on how they were settled. And so I don't see any large adjustments that would come through that would have me be in front of the school board asking for an updated revised budget. And know that we are projecting that the unassigned fund balance to be 6.5%, which is above the 5% fund balance policy. Questions?
I know you said January 4th you'll bring this forward, so if you don't have questions this evening, people could certainly stop and see you between. questions this evening, people could certainly stop and see you between now and January 4th. Are there any questions this eve, Director O'Loughlin?
So, when you had talked about the salary schedule, so not reflected in this one, but then it would be reflected, we would see that in the 2018, or excuse me, 2019 budget then, the way that it was structured and settled recently?
Depending on the group. So we, there were contracts that were settled prior to us doing this work mid-October. And that would be, and not, and, and some contracts went 1.5 in year one, and so it was steps, lanes, and that 1.5. It was based on the information that we knew at that time. I want to say with two of our large bargaining, or at least one large bargaining group, and then another group, it was just steps and lanes because they weren't settled at that time. However, those contracts went zero first year with a different percentage in year two.
Right.
And so the impact is going to come year two. It wouldn't be a financial impact that wasn't already accounted for in year one.
Director Pearson.
I have a question and a request. First, on the sheet that you included, is, am I correct that we're looking at like $1.7 million not balanced?
So, yes, when looking, yes, that is, that is a fair statement. Again, when you look at the bottom of that sheet, it's your $263,000 of the unassigned fund balance, different than where we thought we would be in June.
Okay, but we'll still be about 2% lower than the end of 17, is that correct? Going from 8.62 to 6.67?
So we were projecting, yes, we were projecting to be 6.67. Now we're projecting to be 6.5, and we were higher based on the audit, the 8.62, which was the actual fund balance starting this year.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, just for a request, I'm looking at page three in the book where it has expenditures by program. I'd really like a breakdown of, a greater breakdown of the areas. You know, you say where it says administration is Board of Education, Superintendent Learning Innovation. I'd like to see a little bit more specifics in those areas. So I don't know if that's something that I can make an appointment with you and find greater detail, or what you would recommend.
Absolutely. The one thing I would, I would request that maybe you have looked at first is if you go to the back of the book, I want to say it starts on page 12. It, it breaks in, and that's revenue. Expenses start on page 16, where it gives it by objects. So it's, you're, you're looking at program, which is administration, but you might be able to get, to draw your understanding from saying, okay, this is what we, the 100 series is salaries. This is what we're spending for those particular codes.
Okay, that may help.
The 200 is benefits. This is what we're spending for those codes. If you want a different translation, absolutely. But if you look back there first, because then it also gives a description on why it went up or down if it was a very large change.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Director Potatik.
Thank you. Kristin, particularly, and you hit it right on the head, page 12 and beyond, and particularly that section. Number one, I, I really appreciate the comments you put after those areas where there were changes and why. And, and a lot of them I'm able to go through and I understand, and there's others that I just kind of scratch my head. What would be the best way to handle those questions? And I don't, because of the length of the meeting tonight already, I don't want to do it now. Would it be by email or, or some other method?
The email would be preferred only because then I am able to, then everybody has the same information. You know, typically how that communication goes. Some of this, and, and I just want to identify, and you can, and maybe it's more of our verbiage as far as the accounting department goes, sometimes we're bouncing numbers between codes. We thought it was going to be in one place, and it ended up being in another, and that's reflected, and I'm trying to find a page that says, it was coded under this number. We moved from object code 143 and shifted two positions to 120. That's our speak to say it's in a different line. It's there, it hasn't changed. But yes, I think if you have a series of questions.
And, well, what I did is, if I understood it, I kept going. If I didn't, I highlighted it, and I'm saying, I've got several of those.
Yes.
And in some cases, not even the answer to a question so much as kind of a discussion, what's happening there.
Yes. An email would be preferred.
Thank you.
Director Pelletier.
Thank you, Dr. O'Loughlin, for bringing the, your question up, which spurred my secondary question to that. So with regard, just, and given the fact that this is, for some of us, our first time going through the contract cycle, or the process of, of contracts, one thing that struck me as a surprise was the notion of the back-ending the, the contracts. And I guess what I'm curious about is, how do we prepare for that decision? Is this something where, you know, we say, if, if they make this decision, this is what we do. If they make that decision, you know, we may be in worse shape next year because of this decision, or better shape next year, whatever it is. I guess I'm, 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 that's, that's new to me. So do we plan our budgets according to those potential consequences either way, two year, you know, two years out?
Yes, to a degree. And the reason why I say that is, when the board, the school board is in closed session and setting parameters, depending on the percentage ultimately at the end of the day, it's, we are willing to spend this dollar amount over the course of two years. So in some of that, I've already taken into account, because steps and lanes, and even moving forward, the projection of the next three years, steps and lanes is included. So some of that is already there. But then it's, what is, how does the increase play out? Well, should, let's say, for example, instead of contracts being backloaded, let's say it was, let's put everything the first year, and then we'll do zero the next. We, we want our money today, and let it compound, and then move forward. My answer to that is, we're aware, and we show, you know, we show the board the impact of that financial decision. The timing is harder in that, let's just say, contract settled for another million dollars this year than what we had for steps and lanes, because everything got front-loaded. Well, now you're going to show us a deficit of another million dollars, of which you would have a very hard time fixing, if you will, or, you know what I mean, without it just eating the fund balance. What do you do in December to change the course of 17, 18? So ultimately, you would probably have to address it in 18, 19 anyway. It's just, are you addressing today's financial discussion tomorrow based on what happened in the past, or are you basing, basing it on what is going to happen in the future? Either way, you're kind of still having that conversation, because the same dollar amount is going out the door. It's just what year is the dollar amount going out the door?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Director Lehman.
But just to follow up on that, but from a budgeting perspective, when we go into closed session, we have an understanding of the dollar amount that we're going to be spending. How, how that's divvied up is more in the negotiation process, but the bottom line, for budgeting purposes, we know how much we're going to be spending.
Correct.
Director Stivlin.
I just have, I think this is kind of along the same lines, and maybe some of what your questions are is actually answering my question. So I'm just looking at the actual end of budget for 16, 17. The expenditures in the general fund were, it looks like 100, about 100 million. The, the preliminary budget was for 104, and now we're at 107. That's a pretty, so 107 million for expenditures in the general fund for this year, and last year it was 100. Can you speak to what is going into that just a little bit, just broadly speaking?
What page are you on?
I'm on page two. Just when you look at the, across the expenditures, it's a 2.7% increase from the preliminary budget, but it's quite a bit higher than that from last year's budget. So I'm just a little worried that that's a big jump in one year, that we won't be able to sustain if, if there's something we need to know more about, you know?
Yes, so, again, there were contracts that weren't a zero.
Yeah.
Weren't a zero in year one. And so that would have an impact, because anything that, because we didn't budget for percentage increase, we only budget for movement, for steps and lanes. And so anything that went above that would be included now in that number.
Okay.
Back to, and, and the challenge is, is some of this information, and it could be timing, you know, you're talking, you have capital expenditures in there, and you have long-term facility maintenance in there, in that big budget number before we parse it out. And so it was, it very well could be, we thought the project was going to get done, it didn't get done, and now it's reflective in this year expenditure instead of last year.
Okay.
And so that is, that's a little bit of the challenge of looking and saying, you know, where were we, where are we, and why we grew 3 million?
So is that kind of talking to the operations and maintenance? Because that's what I was noticing, too, that there's a big fluctuation, you know, like from last year, I think it was like 17 million, and then what was budgeted, but then when it actually ended up, we were only at nine.
Yes.
And then preliminary this year is 15, so it's like, wow, those are big jumps. So can you talk a little bit about what that is?
That sort of thing comes down to timing. I mean, if you were to look at operations and maintenance, again, we, there's ebb and flow, and not to that degree. There's ebb and flow as far as warmer winter, less snow. I mean, there's things that, that we, that can get adjusted that are honestly beyond our control. That sort of stuff, though, you're talking larger items. You're talking things that are probably more timing. We thought we were going to do it, it got delayed, we're going to do it the next year type of situation.
Yeah, I think for me, and maybe, maybe this is a little bit what others are talking to as well, is just when you see a big jump like that, it's a little nerve-wracking, because it's not sustainable, and we're, we are still above our 5%, but we're, we're dropping quite quickly, and that is not going to be sustainable. So I guess we're going to have to look at what can be done about that.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, remember, this is on the agenda, January 4th. If you have further questions, email Ms. Hoheisel. We're going to take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
2018 as presented. Could I get that motion?
So moved.
Second.
So move here, second over here. Any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye, pose. Thank you. Next action item, course additions, revisions, deletions. Ms. Larson.
Good evening, Board Chair Hepner, members of the board. On Thursday, November 16th, you were presented with recommendations regarding course changes and additions for the 2018-19 school year from administration and the Curriculum Advisory Council. Before asking for your final approval tonight for these changes, administration and the council would like to add an additional recommendation that was approved and endorsed by the council on November 28th, 2017. The additional recommendation is to add a high school course called Exploring the Teaching Profession. This course will provide students an opportunity to learn the various skill sets required for the teaching profession, and it also will allow them to examine influences that shape schools today, so social influences, political influences, and historical influences of education. It also includes service learning hours in schools, making presentations, working with teachers, blogging, small group activities, and reflective writing to get to know themselves better. It is part of the Entry Point Project, so it aims to recruit multilingual EL students, first-generation and college-bound kids, members of racial and ethnic minorities, and low-to-moderate income students. It also is a college-in-the-schools course offered through the University of Minnesota. Are there any questions about this recommended addition?
Before that, let's take a motion to approve the course additions, deletions, and revisions.
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you. Now, Director Pearson.
So the class you were just talking about sounds fascinating. Is it just for that group, or is it?
For all students.
You're really hoping to, to get that group more involved, but it's for all, my daughter wants to be a teacher in the worst way.
Yes, it's for all students.
She will be happy to hear that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Director Stivlin.
Thank you. What kind of a teacher will teach that? What certification?
That actually may depend upon the staff at the high school who are interested. They will have to have their master's licensure in a particular field, but since it is about the teaching profession, they all would be qualified to teach it through CIS. So it could also bring on a teacher who's new to CIS approval through the University of Minnesota, or it may be a current high school teacher that would like that. It won't be concentrated on a particular area, or a content, or a grade level. It'll be general teaching in the profession.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's great.
Director O'Loughlin.
So the Entry Point Project, is that part of a national or federal initiative?
Federal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the additions, deletions, and revisions as presented, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye, pose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a third reading, Policy 103, complaints, student, students, employees, parents, other persons, policy working groups. I'll turn it over to Director Pelletier.
Okay, so at the last meeting, this was polled, and we had some discussion from a few board members at the table that we, I believe we, you know, kind of came to conclusion on, on those. But then after, after the meeting, I sent out a request just to get some written suggestions from this policy. And so just again, sorry, this is the third reading, so we've had two readings already, and this will be the third one. But I did want to just note for the board's benefit, the area in green was, was a suggested addition to the policy verbiage. We ran that through legal, and the, the area in red is the, is the legal terminology that they would prefer we use, as opposed to the suggestions in green. So if anyone has any questions, great, otherwise, I think we'll be ready for a motion.
Okay, could I get a motion in a second to approve Policy 103?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Second. Any discussion questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye, pose. Thank you. Next item is the superintendent contract. And let me get there. Board members, you've received a summary of the terms for the superintendent contract, comparison from nearby districts, a copy of the superintendent's contract, the writing in red is the updated, or the changes. The personnel working group met a couple times in person, couple times over the phone, and I met with Superintendent Pontrelli half a dozen times, and this is what we've, what we are recommending to the board. I'll just quickly go through. Term of contract, July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021. The benefits, I think you've had a chance to see those, short-term income protection at 90%, previously 70. Healthcare savings account, you can see the improvements to the premium-only HRA. Salaries for her fourth year, fifth year, sixth year of employment, tax sheltered annuity, additional salary payments each of those three years as well. And then we added language, having to do with the bereavement leave, and emergency leave, and tuition reimbursement. These are similar to what is found in the district director's contracts. You saw the superintendent goals at the start of this process that were presented to the personnel working group. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the summary of terms for the superintendent contract. Could I get a second?
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Second here, okay. Second here, okay. Discussion. Director Lehman.
I had the pleasure of working with George and Mike on this contract. I think for me, it's important that this contract be for three years. For me, it rewards the excellent work that Superintendent Pontrelli has shown to the district and to the constituents of this great community. It also, for me, honors the commitment that we made to the public when we were looking for a superintendent. It was abundantly clear that one of the things the community wanted was stability with regards to leadership in our district. The three-year contract honors that commitment to the community. It also, for me, honors the commitment to her team. Denise has put together a tremendous, tremendous team of individuals that she works with. I, I thought it important to, not only, we heard back in May when the principals sent a letter to us, but I thought it's important for the community to hear what was said. This was a letter presented to the board by all of the principals and the administrative team that Superintendent Pontrelli works with. It was directed to Board Chair Hepners and members of the District 834 Board of Education. Without question, the last two years have had numerous challenges. Many of these challenges have been highlighted at board meetings, in the media, online, and in our community. As principals, we fully understand the complexities associated with making tough decisions while considering multiple perspectives and working towards the accomplishments of the strategic plan. While challenges control much of the district narrative as of late, we believe it is important to make sure the District 834 Board of Education knows amazing work has occurred and continues to occur both in front and behind the scenes. There are incredible accomplishments happening in our schools each and every day. Superintendent Pontrelli leads this work. We are confident that through her leadership, District 834 will continue to strengthen learning experiences for all students. Strength areas developed through Superintendent Pontrelli's leadership include students are the focus, equity is critical in student support systems, transition and social-emotional learning, teacher development and evaluation, Q Comp, professional development, curriculum development, data collection and use of data, special education reform, grading and reporting practices, principal leadership and training, strategic planning, prioritization and execution, innovation, multi-tiered systems of support, which we heard about tonight, collaborative teams. Superintendent Pontrelli leads with passion, integrity, and wisdom. In doing so, she motivates and inspires all of us to be better educators and leaders. We know the role of the school board is complicated, but feel it is important. You know where the principals of Stillwater area public schools stand. We stand by our leader, Denise Pontrelli. It is with enthusiasm that we support the renewal and extension of her contract. Having been on the board for seven years, going on eight years, I can tell you that I have never received a letter to that extent outlining the support that this district has for the superintendent. And so I am very confident in approving this contract for Superintendent Pontrelli.
Thank you. Other comments? Director Stivland.
I have a comment. I, I feel like this is a really very generous contract. I feel like it's, it's great. It looks like a lot of work was put into it, and it's definitely very well-deserved on the part of Superintendent Pontrelli. I am wondering, because I'm concerned about our low capture rate in our district, and I would like to try to grow our enrollment as we go forward in the community, I wonder if it would be possible to have a clause added in this contract that would somehow be like a bonus for increasing enrollment over the next three years. I'm kind of curious to know what other board members think of that idea.
Information-wise, I don't know if I have a judgment on that. We have played with the idea of performance in prior contracts, particularly did that when Corey Nguyen was in our superintendent. If you look out at the spreadsheet that they furnished us, there are probably two or three districts that do have portion of the salary is based on performance or meeting certain criteria. So I'm saying that is new ground. I haven't thought about it deeply in terms of embedding it in this contract, and when the three of us met, I, I don't think we raised that topic. But like yourself, and it's pretty well-known, I, I believe very much in, in marketing and working very diligently. And when I say "we," I'm talking about the collective's "we" in a big, big sense that all of us partake in that.
Director Loughlin.
So I guess I, I think of that in terms of the law of attraction, and personally, I think that I would rather personally just see Superintendent Pontrelli and her team focus on the continuous improvement and support of, of systems. That I think she has done an amazing job over the last few years, really establishing where some of our gaps have been, where some of our biggest needs have been. As we know, just given the turnover in leadership that we've had over the years, we, we've seen some gaps, and we've seen some real areas of, of growth that we need to focus on. And so I think for her efforts to be really directed on the students that we, that we do have, that we are, that we do have the honor and privilege of serving, and continuing to invest in that, and that as we strengthen and grow those programs, that, that only will yield hopefully increased enrollment. But I think that that's, for me personally, I, I think that's really where the, the resources and the time and attention and the energy needs to be focused.
Director Pelletier.
To answer your, your, your thoughts, or my, you know, just, you know, I haven't thought about it like that at all. I don't necessarily feel comfortable commenting on something like that, but I appreciate the So I guess, you know, for me, if, if that were something, you know, maybe down the road, I, I would really want a lot of information on that, but I appreciate the creative, the creative attempt there, I do. And if I could make just a little statement, I believe very strongly that one of the most significant factors that has caused stumbling blocks in this district has been the consistent turnover of leadership over the past decade. Instability in leadership affects the monitoring of programs. Without monitoring of programs and systems, we cannot truly grow as a district. Without stability, things fall through the cracks at the detriment of our children and our community in general. It is because of this and the other reasons already voiced that I am fully in support of the renewal and extension of this contract.
Thank you. Director Pearson.
Thank you. First, thank you to the Personnel Working Group. I know you met several times and worked hard on this. I've just been thinking a lot about how we've been talking about how are we going to move on, and how, how do we get to a better place as a board and not be divided? And I think, you know, the reality is, the majority has every right to vote how it wants. But I wonder if it would be, if it would serve us well as we talk about wanting to hear multiple perspectives and listen to different voices, if it would be better for us to work toward a solution that we all, like all seven of us agree on together? I feel like this has nothing to do with Superintendent Pontrelli, just about being fiscally careful. I feel like this is a lot, things like the 90% for short-term income protection, that seems really high, and I just wonder if there's a way that we could have a discussion about what can, what can the seven of us support together? And maybe we could never get there, but to try more often to seek a solution that reflects all of our voices, and that maybe that will bring us to a better place as a district.
Director Pelletier.
Could I, could I just ask a follow-up on that? Because I had a question about the monetary component also. And Chair Hepner, would you feel comfortable, not to put you on the spot, but would you feel comfortable sharing what we discussed about that it's a total of, is it over, over three years, you know, what, what the total is with the benefits?
I brought that, I will be happy to share that.
George, I think I've got my.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
What it is, and, and I think what you're asking for is percentages.
Well, I, I thought we had discussed a number around 32,000 or 33,000 over the course of three years.
34, I think.
34,000 over the three years, yeah.
Total, including salary and benefits.
Benefits, right.
Benefit package is what we're looking at. Okay, thanks.
But can I?
Director Pearson.
I think with that, that doesn't take into account things like the short-term income protection and the bereavement, emergency, tuition reimbursement. Well, maybe it includes the tuition reimbursement.
Well, if I can, it wouldn't include the tuition reimbursement, because you'd have to spend it first before you got it back. Short-term income protection would only be used if sick leave ran out, and then there's that 10-day window before you get there. So those wouldn't be figured in to a contract, because you may never use them, so that would probably be unfair.
So I think my concerns are more with those extra things, should they happen? Because I think, like with my husband's employment, short-term disability is 66.23%. So it just feels like 90 is a really high number, and I think emergency leave, most people have to use vacation time if they have an emergency. To me, it just feels like more than it needs to be.
Well, I guess what we looked at for that, to speak to the first point, the short-term income protection, when we looked at that with comparison districts, if I can find I guess we didn't get an answer from three of them, but the, the Forest Lake is at 90, Hastings is at 100, North St. Paul Maplewood is at 100, Roseville's at 100. And so I think when she brought that to us, it was that, that, actually, that was her most important item, was changing that from 70 to 100. And then when we talked about it as a Personnel Working Group, we talked to her and said we won't go 100, so we did go 90. She brought up again, well, the neighboring districts, and we said, great for them, you know, we're at 90. So that's, that's the rationale for why we arrived at 90.
Which I appreciate, and I, I just, I think for me, I want to be able to support it. I just, I feel like it's too high, so I, I wish we could come to something that we all could agree on, but I, I know you put in a lot of time and came to what you felt was best.
Thank you. I'll just make a quick statement, too, if I may. I want Superintendent Pontrelli to have the time to carry through the program started or enhanced under her leadership. I agree with the district principals, who with enthusiasm supported the renewal and extension of her contract. They said, we are confident that through her leadership, District 834 will continue to strengthen learning experiences for all students. And I, I thought that was important, that they recognized her work for all students. Secondly, Denise is the person I want to work with the community on our next strategic plan. She is willing to do what a fellow superintendent recently said is necessary for school leaders. At the AMSD conference, Superintendent Stalock from Prior Lake Savage said, "When necessary, school leaders must be willing to interrupt the comfort of adults to do what is right for kids." I believe Superintendent Pontrelli is that courageous school leader, and she will bring that courage to making the important recommendations for the strategic plan and for our students. And three, I would hope the board would reward Superintendent Pontrelli for doing what she was hired to do, consistently work to improve teaching and learning in District 834. Her willingness to serve our district for the next three years shows her ongoing commitment to the staff, the students, and the community. In their supporting statements, the principals noted many things that, that Mr. Lehman quoted previously, so I, I won't go into those, but I was very impressed that the principals were willing to, to send that, that letter to us and show their support. I believe the students in District 834 would be well-served by renewing and extending Superintendent Pontrelli's contract for the next three years. Director Potatchek.
Yes, and we spent a lot of meetings, as been mentioned, on this document, and working out what you have before you. My two colleagues on the Personnel Committee know, because I told them very, very early, I do not support a three-year contract, and, and for a lot of reasons. On hindsight, one of the things that bothers me a little bit, by hindsight, because I, I didn't catch this earlier, but I did think about it today. Every bargaining group that we looked at, we met as a collective board of seven individuals, and we decided on parameters. What I feel guilty about, and along with my colleagues, we didn't do that with this contract. And I think in the future, I'd recommend that we do that. First meet as a collective board and say, okay, where we're going to go with this. And, and I'm saying, I feel like I was remiss, so I'm not saying I'm holier-than-thou. The three-year contract, this is what bothers me on it, is that, one, I worked on each part of, of the contract that you see there, and we're not the same as where we started, so there was an awful lot of give and take. But let's face it, everybody in this room knows, and beyond this room knows, that there are four board seats that are open for an election, and that election is going to occur in less than a year. And that board, I believe, has the right, depending on the makeup, and I'm not a fortune teller, I don't know how that's going to be decided, but that board has the right to decide on a long-term contract for the superintendent. So I'm not in favor of three years. We've had our discussion, I believe, Tom and George have, have made a strong case, and at this point, that's where I am. Thank you.
Okay, I think we've had our say, is, is, are we willing to, ready, oh.
I just have one other question. If, if the tuition reimbursement was actually exercised, that's $5,200, how much does that actually increase the salary, then? I mean.
Well.
Percentage?
Percentage-wise.
Here's what I have, four percentages, and I think every board member has that, but this is salary, TSA salary contribution, health care savings, any, health care savings, premium only, and the totals, the percent of increase in the first year is 2.8%. The percent of increase in the second year over the first year is 2.23%. The percent in the third year over the second year is 1.95%.
So what she's asking, though, is if?
It's above that. It's not included in those figures I gave you.
I think maybe 5%, but I may be figuring it wrong, that it would be at 5% in that first year.
And is tuition reimbursement something that we give to our directors or staff?
And the directors, yep.
Okay.
Director, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, is it just, is it about the same amount, probably?
Director Loughlin.
So may I ask a follow-up question to Director Potatchek? So I, and I'm genuinely asking, I just really like to hear a divergent perspective, because it's, I just want to learn more. So can you please just share with me kind of the, how that is going to best serve our students now? So not renewing a three-year contract and looking at a one-year or two-year, I don't know what you're proposing, but the compelling case of how that is going to best serve our students?
Sure.
That we have now?
Sure. Quite honestly, I think what's very, very important is the relationship with the school board and with the superintendent, whoever that is. I believe at the minimum here, you would do a one-year contract, which would run through next year. Then, depending on who was elected, if the same players that are sitting here right now return, I would presume it would be extended. If it's a different playoff, I don't know. Even in my position, I'm not sure where I'll be a year from now. my position, I'm not sure where I'll be a year from now. But I think that relationship, acceptance for all parties concerned, including the superintendent, is vital.
And I don't disagree with that. I guess what I'm struggling to reconcile is how making a decision based on information that is going to happen eleven months from now, how that is really, like I said, going to best serve our students and just the people that are serving our students and supporting our students. So her team, our principals, our teachers. So I think, I was just curious because I don't understand how this, how that rationale is going to be best for kids.
And if I may, I think a parallel to this, and one that's in my mind and the situation, I think all of us are aware, is what happened in St. Paul, when a board was brought, was elected, that was not on the same page as the superintendent, because there was a lot of turnover in that election, and they ended up having to spend a great deal of money to buy out that contract.
Director Pelletier.
So first of all, I'd like to, you know, validate Director Stivland's comment and also thank Director Potatchek for your admission of the, you know, the not discussing some of these nuances, you know, with us as an entire group. I appreciate that, and I hope that we can do a better job at that moving forward. And truly, this is not a, I don't mean that as a blaming type of comment. I just mean it more, how do we improve? You know, this is a way that, in my opinion, that we could improve. You know, that, Director Stivland's comment, maybe that's something that we could have discussed, you know, a while back. But I guess I'd like to just, if I could, drive home, again, the fact that, for me, this is all about the children. And we have been in very wonderful and sometimes challenging and frustrating conversations with Mary Sekoni, and we've had some tough, you know, just tough conversations that have led to, in my opinion, some major improvements with how we operate as a board, with how we operate, how we communicate with our superintendent and staff, and subsequently, how our superintendent and staff can do better communicating with us. And to me, that is stability. To me, that is progress. To me, that is doing our jobs to improve what we have right now. And I feel that this contract, I, you know, the election is honestly the last thing on my mind. I feel that I want to be in a position where we can continue to ask tough questions of our superintendent and staff, as I do believe we are right now, and we're getting there. And again, I just want to drive that, that we've got a lot of work to do, and I believe that this superintendent and staff is fully capable to help us get to that next level.
Director Lehman.
I think the other thing that we need to understand is that, and I don't disagree that we, you know, maybe have full group discussion. The distinction is that the ability to how we discuss the bargaining groups is we are allowed to have a closed session for that. We would not be allowed to have a closed session to discuss Denise's contract or any superintendent's contract. That would be in a public forum. Not to say that we can't have that, but I just, I want to make sure that people understand that there is a distinction with regards to the closed meetings relative to all of us discussing, discussing the bargain groups, because that is allowed under the open meeting law to be closed for those discussions.
Director Pearson.
I want to make clear, because I'm not sure if it's being insinuated or not, I don't think there's anybody at this table who doesn't want what's best for the students in this district. And I think part of that is fiscal responsibility and looking in that long term and what could happen. So I want to be clear that I think every single one of us ran for the students, I have four kids in this district, I want the best for those kids and all of the rest of the kids in this district. So the fact that I just think this is too much doesn't have anything to do with what I want for our students. I just think it's too much. So I want to make that clear.
Okay, with that.
Sarah has.
Oh, I just wanted to follow up on.
Director Stivland.
Thank you for, thank you. I just want to follow up on what you were, speaking to Director Lehman, that we are, you're right, we are not allowed, I did a little research, we are not allowed to talk about the superintendent contract in a closed session, that we must take action in an open meeting to approve the contract, and then the contract is actually a public document, which I think is really interesting. But I do think that that doesn't preclude us from having, giving ourselves a little bit more time to be a little bit creative and really look at, and allow everyone to really think through exactly what they think the contract should have in it, instead of, you know, so going forward, it's just something I'm thinking we might want to consider, giving ourselves just a little bit more time to really consider all the different components. I appreciate very much the work of the Personnel Working Group, and I know that's a lot of work, but I kind of agree with Mike that it would be maybe a good idea for the whole board to at least weigh in, you know, at least maybe one time somehow on some of these components. I just think it might be good.
Director Lehman.
I don't disagree. I think that we certainly were aware that Denise's contract was coming up. Sometimes we're bound by the contract itself as to when you can enter into negotiations with the superintendent, which was the last contract. I think you raise a good point. I would suggest that the board members start jotting down things that they'd like to see in the next contract relative to creative ideas for making the district better that, you know, because it starts from the top. So, and certainly feel free to share those with whoever's on the Personnel Committee, because it, we do meet, we do talk, we do have good, frank discussions about, you know, what we'd like to see, and any suggestion is always welcome.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the 2018-2021 contract for Superintendent Pontrelli, please indicate by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Next item is the Resolution to Fully Fund Special Education Services. Mike, you're going to take the Minnesota one?
Yes. And I'll read the resolution first, and then we'll have a discussion after that.
Yeah, and let me just warn board members, there are two of these. One is for Minnesota, and one is federal. So Mike's going to read a lot of wherethes and now-therefore. And I've got the same wherethes for the federal, but I'm not going to read all the same ones again. So please pay attention to your screens or your sheets, however you're doing it. Okay, Mike.
And there will be some clarification and context after I finish and George finishes reading. This one is designed Minnesota. Resolution to Fully Fund Special Education Services, and this is lengthy. Whereas local boards of education place a very high priority on ensuring that all students receive high-quality special education programs and instruction, and whereas in 1975, Congress enacted the Education for All Handicapped Children Act, PL 94-142, now known as the Individuals with Disabilities Act, IDEA, to improve access to education for children with disabilities by guaranteeing a free, appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment, assure that the rights of children with disabilities and their parents are protected, assist states and school system to provide for the education of all children with disabilities, and to assess and assure the effectiveness of efforts to educate all children with disabilities. And whereas when IDEA became law in 1975, the federal government promised to fund forty percent of the additional cost of educating children with disabilities. And yet, the federal government has failed to adequately fund the mandated programs and services arising under IDEA, never providing more than fifteen percent of the additional cost. And whereas sufficient federal funding for IDEA would significantly enhance the ability of local school systems to provide an excellent education for all students. And whereas the special education cross subsidy continues to be a major obstacle for Minnesota school districts to grapple with due to the growing number of students receiving special education, more specialized services, and rising costs associated with those services, and inadequate funding. And whereas the state's special education funding system has not kept pace with the rising cost of mandated services and support for students with special needs. And whereas the cross subsidy for school district for fiscal year 2016 is $679 million, a 5.6% increase from fiscal year 2015. And whereas between rising needs and insufficient state and federal aid, the amount of funding school districts as a whole in Minnesota will be forced to pay for special education costs will reach an average of $815 per student in fiscal year 17. Now therefore be it resolved that we urge the governor and legislature to strenuously advocate for significant increases in federal special education funding and meaningful special education reforms at the federal and state levels. And now therefore be it resolved that there is an urgency, the Minnesota Legislature, to convene a task force to work on special education funding, specifically with a focus on the impact of the new special education funding formulas, the projected cross subsidy, and recommendations with a timeline to eliminate the cross subsidy.
Could I get a motion to approve the state resolution to fully fund special education?
So moved.
Down here.
I'll second.
Shelley, second. It says roll call vote.
Okay, if I could, a little bit context in this. One week ago, I, along with 114 other delegates for the Minnesota School Board Association, worked on various resolutions that came to that body that would go into our legislative platform. The very last thing we did after going through those resolutions, and I'll talk about those a little bit more in a few seconds, after that is the leadership of the Minnesota School Boards Association asked us to go back to our home districts and to bring these two resolutions and to pass them, and they asked for a roll call vote. I already did this in 916, and they passed it unanimously by 12 out of the 14 who were there, and there were two absent that night. So that's the kind of context for this. There's a lot of rationale. We could add to this, but I'm saying this is our number-one legislative priority, which we've already talked about as well.
Roll call vote. Yes.
Vice Chair Lachlan.
Yes.
Treasurer Lehman.
Yes.
Burke Pelletier.
Yes.
Director Pearson.
Yes.
Director Potatchek.
Yes.
Director Stivland.
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you. And now the Resolution to Fully Fund Special Education Services. This is directed to the federal government, and like I said, the wherethes are all the same that Mike read for the Minnesota one. Now therefore be it resolved that we urge the President and Legislature to strenuously advocate for significant increases in federal special education funding and meaningful special education reforms at the federal and state level. And now therefore be it resolved that the state of Minnesota calls upon the Congress of the United States to pass appropriate legislation in order to increase funding for federal special education mandates to meet the urgent financial special education needs of our cities and towns. And be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Senate cause a copy of this resolution to be delivered to all United States representatives and senators representing Minnesota in the Congress of the United States. Could I get a motion to approve that federal resolution to fully fund special education?
So moved.
We had a move down here by Mike. We had a second. Director Pelletier, roll call vote for that one?
Board Chair Hebner.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lachlan.
Yes.
Treasurer Lehman.
Yes.
Burke Pelletier.
Yes.
Director Pearson.
Yes.
Director Potatchek.
Yes.
Director Stivland.
Yes.
Thank you. Board member reports. Board chair report, I'll start with. You should have in your documents the EMIIT board meeting. Last one was November 15. Looking at the time, I'll let you look through that on your own. If you have questions, please contact me. And I do want to mention an event that's coming up, January 3 at Roseville Area Middle School. It's called Walk in Another Shoe's: A Simulation of Living in Poverty. Empathy is the ability to share another's experience or feelings without having shared the actual experience. Simulating the experience of living in poverty will develop educators' empathy for students and families who attend our schools every day. This will be held Roseville Area Middle School, Wednesday, January 3, from 4:45 to 7:45. You may register by December 22 at Equity Alliance MN. I think that's all I need to mention. I know many school board members from EMIIT districts have attended this in the past. I'm intending on doing it, and if anybody else would wish to, please get ahold of me, and we'll go over there and try to walk in another's shoes. Board member reports. You want to start on an end somewhere?
Sure, I'll start.
Sarah, yep.
I'll start. So I have just a little bit of good news from MSBA. So earlier this year, they sent out a call for suggestions for legislative policy recommendations for MSBA, and I sent them a recommendation that we fully fund gifted education in the state of Minnesota. And I'm just going to read a little bit of what I put here. Every child in the state of Minnesota has a right to a rigorous and challenging education, because our gifted students have unique learning needs and social-emotional differences, and because they have the capacity for superlative academic production. They require accommodations which encourage growth and development of these special qualities. By continuing to not adequately address the educational needs of this group of students, we risk losing their hearts and minds for future contributions to our state. It goes on, but I will not read the whole thing. The good news is, this resolution was passed at the delegation assembly, which Mike attended earlier in December. So it is now fully the new policy for MSBA, and they will be advocating for new legislature to support funding, it would essentially triple the amount of funding that we have for gifted ed. So right now, it's $13 per the student population, the average daily membership. This would increase to 39, and it would affect every single district in the state. And the cool thing is, like, they gave us the list of how much money that means, so we would get an increase of about $215,000 to be used for identification, professional development, and programming for gifted ed. The very, very cool thing about this timing is that I recently found out that the National Association for Gifted Children, the NAGC Conference, which is the big deal, we've been trying to get it in Minneapolis for years. They just announced recently that it will be in Minneapolis next. it will be in Minneapolis next November. So if we could pass this legislation and get some additional funding for these, for, for these students, then a lot of our staff would be able to use some of that funding to actually attend the conference and it, I've gone to it myself, it is an incredible experience as an educator. I just can't even tell you how exciting it was to learn so many different things about gifted kids. So I'm very excited about this, obviously it has a long way to go, but right now, here it is, it's a, it's an MSBA policy, so.
Congratulations, thank you.
Yeah.
If I, if I could just jump off a little bit on that, what you need to realize is that for the whole state of Minnesota, there were only 19 resolutions that were presented. So I told Sarah, it's like going to the racetrack and never having been there before, betting on the first race and hitting a winner, they're not automatic like that. And in fact, it was very, very resounding, the vote among 115 was 94 to 17, which I thought was pretty remarkable. Just building a little bit, this is one of the most democratic situations I've ever found myself in and I have much more respect, not that I didn't to begin with, of Minnesota School Boards Association. They have this huge binder for all delegates, they go through it at a pre-meeting, and by the way, board members, if you want to go look at this online, it's all online on their website, so all you'd have to do is go to Resolution Number 5 and you'd find Sarah's in there, and they do an incredible amount of what's present in law, what's the context of each of these, and out of the 19 that were presented, 12 were adopted and seven were not, so it's not an easy task, but it's, it's a, it's an impressive display.
Having done it the past two years.
Tom, you have, yeah.
It is quite a, quite a.
Democracy at work.
Process, yeah.
Director Pelletier.
Just, just two items. I, I was really moved by a recent situation that happened at the high school. We had a, it was a, it was a, it was a scare that was on social media and it really, it went quite viral in our community and other communities even found out about it and it was a scary situation and I, I bring it up because what was so incredible and powerful about it was that we had so many kids reporting, reporting the incident and, and this, it's, it's sad that we're in this day and age where you have to worry about, about certain things and I just cannot say enough how happy I am that not only did so many of our children report it, they had the confidence to report it and the strength and character to report, but our, our staff took it seriously, our principals, our administration, John, John Perry went, worked with the police department and it just, I, I'm, I'm so proud of the district and I'm, I'm just most proud of our kids for having the strength to report it. That is how we become strong and I just, I felt, I felt like I had to comment on that. It was a wonderful outcome. And secondly, I want to take my time to congratulate Chair Hapner, because he didn't allow it earlier, but Chair Hapner, I, I have so much respect for you, we have learned so much from you, your, your poise, your, your thoughtfulness, your knowledge, and I, it could not, this honor could not have come to a more deserved person, so I want to thank you for everything that you have done for this district and I wanted to personally congratulate you.
Thank you, thank you. Director Lehman.
Nothing other than I would act a little same stuff.
Alrighty, Director Lockman. Director Pearson.
Just really quickly, I just want to do a shout out, all our teachers are amazing, but I went to four band concerts last week and I know that's a drop in the bucket for how many there are in the month of December and the Vega Bonds came to Rotary today and did a great job, just a huge shout out to all of our staff, our music staff and our students who are working really hard and the Vega Bonds have to make up a lot of school because they're out of the building a lot during this time of year, so I'm really, really impressed again, shout out to our music department, thank you.
Director Patachik.
And I've got two, but I'm going to make Sarah do the last one and that will be on the C meeting. But what I want to cover just very, very quickly is there was a meeting of 916 this week and a part of what we built off of was something that George and I and Christine King watched a presenter come to Century College and talk about career options for students and how about making that a reality, and we'll save an expansion on that later. We also went through an audit, what's notable about 916 and other collectives or coalitions is they keep much larger fund balance and as George knows, when he asked that question of Connie, he's the superintendent, when she was here two years ago, one of the reasons they do that is they do not have the power to levy for funds or additional funds, so that's why they feel compelled to create a bigger reserve fund. We also went through a meeting schedule for this coming year and we also will have a board election. Tracy Burnett, who has been the chair for the five years that I've been on 916, no longer will be a delegate to 916 and three other members are also moving on. The one thing they do in selection of officers that's different than ours, but this is the first time they've done it, is anybody right now who's in that organization as a representative can nominate themselves, otherwise at our organization meeting, which will be January 10th, their process and ours are very, very similar. So that's pretty much it, except as I mentioned earlier, they also voted for those same two resolutions on the Minnesota and federal levels for full funding of special education services. Thank you.
Okay. Working group reports, you know the Personnel Working Group met and we brought the information forward, any other policy working group, I guess?
Policy Dream Team is not, did not meet today, we are meeting, the next meeting will be January 18th and the reason for that is that the executive directors are in the process of reviewing the Series 200 policies, so then they go to legal counsel and then they come to us, so that'll be January 18th.
Alrighty, thank you, yep.
I'll just, can I just mention, Mike and I did go to the C meeting.
Oh, okay.
And I did mention that earlier, so I'll just try to be very brief, although it was very exciting. There was a presentation, this was the C general membership meeting and it was held in Roseville on December 8th, the next one is February 9th, and, but they had a, they had a career and technical education presentation by Representative Jim Nash from Oconia, Senator Paul Anderson from Plymouth, and Amy Wallstein, who is the Director of Minnesota Precision Manufacturing Association. Apparently Jim Nash has a bill that is in the House right now, Bill 1944, that is trying to put together some possibility of pilot grants for incentivizing school businesses to partner with education, you know, organizations and trying to create a connection there, maybe whether it be internships or work partnerships or whatever it might be. And so they really had a lot of information, a lot of ideas on different, the, different ideas around career and technical education and the need is great. It's beginning to be a crisis situation almost in Minnesota, there are so many jobs that are being unfilled that require a certain amount of training and our students aren't getting it, so they're, they're really pushing this, you know, this need in our schools for a, more of a career focus because there are a lot of jobs that need to be done and then, so that was one piece. The other piece that we had, a presentation from Jay Staffel, the Executive Director of TRA, and Senator John Szczesinski from Faribault on the Teachers Retirement Association and right now it's underfunded and over time it's getting worse and something needs to be done. They did have a bill that went through, that passed through the Senate last year and then it did not get picked up by the House and they're hoping that they will actually get that done this year. It's really kind of getting to be a critical moment.
Yep, thank you. Okay, with that, I'll move that we adjourn.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays, thanks for staying with us.